The call today is being recorded and it will be posted on the TAPA website at Tennessee. Planning.org. The event has also been granted AICP credits, so thank you to Ian Preston for coordinating that submission. And also thank you to Dustin Shane and Sean Santella for also helping serve the section in planning this training. We also greatly appreciate the willingness of our speakers to be available this morning to share their knowledge and their expertise with the section. There's probably a combined 150 years of experience amongst the speakers today.
That's just with Bill Terry. It's just with Bill Terry.
That's just, well, Bill, Bill accounts for a lot of that, and so do you, Sam. And the first speaker, Sam, is, Sam Edwards, is no stranger to our fall trainings. Mr. Edwards has shared his cautionary tales of legal entanglements on several occasions. And over the course of his professional career, he's worked as a transportation planner for TDOT. He's also worked as the executive director for the Lebanon Wilson County Planning Office. And he's had various roles with the GNRC, including chief legal counsel and executive director. Sam has degrees from MTSU and UT and the Nashville School of Law, and we are very grateful for Sam's continued service to our chapter. So, thank you, Sam, and I'll let you take it away.
All right, thank you. One or two of you may have heard me before, and so, you know, I'll try not to repeat too many stories, but I can't help myself. But I want to start out with a very fundamental thing. And that's 99.9% of what I'm going to be telling you today is related to the statutory law and case law in Tennessee. And you need to know one thing before we start. We are a Dillon's Rule state. And I hope some of you have familiarized yourself with what Dillon's Rule is. You're not going to find it in the Tennessee Code Annotated. It's not there. It is a judge-made rule, and it's been around since the 18, mid 1800s. Judge and I developed this rule and Tennessee has adopted it. And it's important for you to know because, under Dillon's Rule, the only power you have as a planning commission in a board of zoning appeals is that power that is granted to you by the Tennessee General Assembly and is reflected in the Tennessee Code Annotated. It is the black letter law, the power that's granted to you directly in that code, or, and here comes the complicated part, or is implied in that black letter law, or is necessary to implement that law. So it's kind of like they, they used to tell you that here's the rule, here's the exception to the rule, and here's the exception to the exception. So it's a pretty broad statement, but you've got to realize that the base of it is, if it's not in the Tennessee Code Annotated, you may not be able to do it. And I've had planners and good friends call me and say, look, you know, I just read Planning Magazine, and they're doing XYZ in, you know, Alabama, God forbid, and we want to do the same thing. Well, I have to explain to them Alabama's law is different from our law and may allow that. A perfect example is, and this is something that's come up fairly recently, so I'll give you examples of things that have happened. I had somebody that came in and said, look, we want to do a use variance. There's no such thing as a use variance in Tennessee. People say there is, but there really isn't. If you look at, when we get to the Board of Zoning Appeals parts on variances, and when you look at the law of variances, there's no way that a use variance will fit within that statute. So there's no such animal in Tennessee. It may go by another name, and it may be a use permitted on appeal or something of that sort. And here's another caveat. Anybody here from a jurisdiction that was created under a private act or a home rule jurisdiction? Either one of those two may have slightly different rules than what's in the Tennessee Code Annotated. But you have to also remember, if you're one of those jurisdictions, that you can't do something that's prohibited under the Tennessee Code Annotated. So, you know, that, that document, that book, and don't be scared of it, it's, you know, a whole big volume, but you're only dealing with Title 13. So I hope everybody has the ability to look up, and you don't have to buy the book, you can go online, you can go through the court system, you can go through the General Assembly, Secretary of State's office, a number of different sources who will lead you to look at the Tennessee Code Annotated through a LexisNexis website, or just type in Tennessee Code Annotated and you'll be able to pull it up. You should, nobody wants you to become a lawyer. You don't want to become a lawyer, you're happy being planners. So, but you need to be familiar with what that, that law says you can do because of Dillon's Rule. Now let's start out with the basic thing of, what does the code say? How many different planning commissions are there in Tennessee? It identifies four different types of planning commissions in Tennessee. One of them, we hardly ever see, and it's called a community planning commission. Another one, simple municipal planning commissions, being the city itself. Then there's the municipal regional planning commission, which is that area outside the city limits in which the planning commission has jurisdiction over planning issues. The last is the regional planning commission, which is a county planning commission. And we can get into a multi-jurisdictional regional planning commission or a single jurisdiction planning commission, but I want to stop here and go back to the municipal regional planning commission because I've had a number of questions lately on the powers of the municipal regional planning commission. When the local government planning advisory committee basically grants a regional planning commission, and by the way, when you did your growth plan, and everybody did a growth plan except for three jurisdictions in Tennessee, and they were the three metropolitan governments in Tennessee, Moore Lynchburg, Hartswell-Trellishtoe County, Nashville-Davidson County, were exempt from doing a growth plan simply because they were already planning together in one jurisdiction. But all the rest of the counties and the cities had to do a growth plan, and each city had to have an urban, well, had the opportunity to have an urban growth boundary, which is part of the statute also. Your planning region cannot exceed the urban growth boundary. It's the only law that I know in Tennessee that basically said, if you're, if you had a planning region that extended outside of your urban growth boundary, it automatically shrunk to the urban growth boundary. All right. So when you have a planning region as a municipality, and this, this has come up, so what's the duties of that planning commission? It's just like any other planning commission. They can adopt subdivision regulations, they can, they have to approve plats that were within that region, they can develop a plan for that region, and they can recommend rezonings that are to occur in that region. Now, we can get into the fact of, if the county does not have zoning, then there's a process for the city to acquire zoning rights within that region. But we'll, let's just assume that the county does have zoning. What effect does that have on the municipal regional planning commission's abilities? And what effect does that have on the county's regional planning commission's abilities? Very simply, if the municipality has a region and the county has planning and zoning, the only person, the only group that can approve a subdivision within that region is the municipal regional planning commission. If the county adopts or tries to approve that subdivision, it's void. They have no jurisdiction, they have no authority to adopt a, or approve a subdivision within that planning region of the municipality. But we've got another situation we have to review, too. When you have subdivision regulations, what's one thing you have to have? You have to have road standards in through there. The roads in which will be within that subdivision will still be county roads. So the municipal regional planning commission has to coordinate with the county's road department to make sure that they are putting in their standards, road construction that will be acceptable to the county. You don't want to get in a situation where the city approves the subdivision, but the county won't approve the road and make it a public road. So there's a coordination effort that has to go on there. Another thing that occurs quite frequently is developer wants to rezone a piece of property that's found within the region, municipal government's region. Which planning commission does he go to? If he goes to the county's planning commission, regional planning commission, and gets a recommendation for rezoning, that recommendation is void. Because the prime recommending planning commission for rezoning within that municipal region is the city's municipal regional planning commission. If they try to go anywhere else, then that rezoning is voided because it did not go to the correct planning commission. So the municipal side has to send their recommendation up to the county. Now, I'll start off with that simply because it's been a question that's been asked more than once in the last couple of weeks, so I thought, well, better clarify that right on the front end. Once your planning commission has been established, what is the first thing you're supposed to do? Right? What's the first thing the code tells you to do? When you do that, is to develop what? A plan. That's shocking, I know, that a planning commission is supposed to adopt a plan. Well, as, as we all remember from planning school, Alfred Bettman was the guy that went around and wrote a lot of state statutes. He wrote Tennessee's, and he wrote, where was it? Another, New Jersey's. And if you look at the two statutes, they're very similar, except New Jersey was very keen on developing the plan where Tennessee wasn't. Now, this whole concept is not, not that old, but it's not that new either. It was done in 1935. So even back to where we have people now complaining about having a city with a region, it was done in 1935 through Alfred Bettman's statutes. But the first thing it said is, let's do a plan. Now, in order to do the plan, it sets out all the mechanisms that the planning commission has the power to do, which are to look at, all that, the normal planning process. But guess what? The only thing you have to do. That is a major road plan. That's the only element of the plan you are required to do. Now, I think that's a wrong thing. I think that the major road plan is a nice element, is an important element, but it's kind of like, you know, giving a contractor some money to say, you know, let's, build me a house. And the contractor says, great, I'll do that, what kind of house do you want? You go, I don't care, just give me a house. Why, how many rooms do you want? I don't care, build me a house, whatever, whatever you can do with this money. How many bathrooms do you want? Whatever. Where do you want the kitchen? Hmm, wherever you want to put it. And on, and on, and on. That's what you're doing as a planning commission if you don't have a plan. You have no guidance. So the plan is a guidance statement through there. That's what the planning commission is supposed to do. But your very first step is, and this goes into an element of, you know, individual property rights, too, is you have to organize yourself. You know, one, members of the planning commission are supposed to roll on and off, and you're supposed to have a chair, and you're supposed to have rules, parliamentary procedures, which procedures do you want to, to follow? Most people have a default saying we're going to do Robert's Rules of Order. I know very few people that actually totally understand Robert's Rules of Order. You got the base concepts, but you may not have 100% the whole thing of Robert's Rules of Order. You can use Robert's Rules of Order, and you cannot just say, I don't have any rules of order. You can develop your own rules of order or adopt another set besides Robert's. That's your discretion, that's the planning commission's discretion when they develop their own bylaws. But one of the key elements I want to talk about is when you develop your bylaws, the state statute requires you, both as a planning commission and a board of zoning appeals, to make a finding of fact and make all your decisions based upon material evidence. All right, what does that mean? It means that as a planning commissioner or board of zoning appeals, when you make a decision, it must be based upon not speculation, not fears, not rumors, but absolute what a reasonable person will view as a fact. If you have an expert witness that comes in, if you have a traffic engineer, hydrologist, somebody that's, deals with evaluation of property, and they testify, and they're expert witnesses, then you're required to take that testimony over one of your best friends who happens to come into the planning commission and go, this is going to devalue my property. So, whose opinion do you take? Your best friends? Who says that you're going to devalue my property? Or the guy that's professional in this field of evaluation of property? So therefore, most of you have had, and I'm sure will continue to have, meetings in which the room is packed with people that are probably opposed to whatever issues before you. And they will say things like, you know, if you allow this to happen, then we already have terrible road conditions, this will only make them worse, our schools are filled, we don't have any more capacity for, for kids in our school system. If you let this development to occur, it's going to flood my property, it's going to devalue my property. If you let these roads be connected, then you're going to be killing small kids, cats, dogs, and wild turkeys. I noticed hunting stuff out there, you know, wild turkeys seem to be very prevalent now in middle Tennessee, and I've heard that statement made more than once, that you're going to be killing wild turkeys, and the wrong kind of people are going to be moving into this neighborhood. Now, you think I'm being a little far-fetched with that, but I can show you court cases in which that was actually said, well, the wrong kind of people are going to be moving in here. All of that is speculation. There's no fact-based to any of it. The planning commission and board of zoning appeals must make their decision based upon facts, and that needs to be within your bylaws or policies that you adopt. Because the General Assembly tells you, you must make your decisions based upon material evidence and findings of fact. They don't give you an option, it tells you, you must do those kind, you must do that. Bill will, will talk to you later on about a new statute, but you also probably need to make provisions within your bylaws or policies on allowing public comments. Now, how long do you allow people to talk to you before the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals? If you don't put down a standard or a rule, some people will talk for hours and hours and will dominate the whole conversation and dominate the whole meeting. The law allows you to say, you know, here's the methods, if you want to speak to us, you know, you make this choice. You want them to sign up before the meeting? Do you want them to just stand in line behind the microphone and take their turn? You have the choice on what, how you want them to, to speak to you along those lines, whether to sign up or just stand up kind of deal. And also, how long you want them to speak? You know, some people say two minutes, some people say five minutes, some people say three minutes. There's no right answer. The right answer is what you put in your policy statement through there. Now, it's good to have it in your policy statement, but it doesn't do any good, you know, if, for the crowd that maybe this is the very first planning commission they've ever been to, a board of zoning appeals meeting they've ever been to, or it may be the second, or it could be the hundreds. The chair needs to announce before the start of any meeting that this is the policy of the planning commissioner or board of zoning appeals as far as allowing engagement of the public to the planning commission or board of zoning appeals. And they should also make it clear that the comments need to be addressed to the planning commission as a whole, not to any individual. And you're not bound to respond to that, by the way. You, you're bound to hear what they have to say, and you can cut them off at that particular point in time. Well, that's not the only communication people like to give you, is it? How many times members of the planning commission and staff, and this is where the staff has to advise the members of the planning commission and board of zoning appeals, that they can't allow this to happen, is what? Our good old ex parte communication. No, I don't know anybody that really enjoys ex parte communication. Because you're standing in line at, at the grocery store or the pharmacy, or you're trying to get into church, or you're trying to go to your civic club, and somebody, or you're ready to watch the 10 o'clock news, and your phone rings, and they say, John, you've been my best friend forever and ever and ever, said, I need to talk to you about blah, 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 this rezoning, this subdivision, this use permitted on appeal, this variance, I need to talk to you about that. Well, that's communication outside of the meeting. The courts have said that you make your decisions, and staff, you need to tell the planning commission this and the board of zoning appeals, and you've got to emphasize this, you make your decisions based upon what you hear at that meeting. Not outside, not in the hallway, but what they hear within the four walls of that meeting area. And, you know, if, you have to tell the planning commission member, look, if somebody approaches you, you need to tell them, no, I can't hear this. Well, a lot of people won't take no for an answer. Or they'll go, but wait a minute, we, we've been to school together ever since, you know, kindergarten, I've known you for 35 years, you know, what do you mean you can't talk to me? You have to, a member has to explain to them that that is ex parte communication, and you're not supposed to, to take that. But they tell you anyway. There's a cure for that. And it's very painful. Because every member of the planning commission, board of zoning appeals that had ex parte communication has to, at the start of the meeting, get the attention of the chair and say, look, said, John Jones talked to me at the grocery store, and this is what he said. Or Mary called me at night, and this is what she said. So that everybody on the planning commission or board of zoning appeals knows exactly what you know. And that's one of the issues of property rights, because it deals with fairness and it deals with ethics. Because you don't want to go in and be blamed as having a bias. And if you take that conversation and you hear it, there's no way that you can now claim that you're coming in with no opinion. Because I don't care how careful you are, as a member of the planning commission, once you've heard somebody make that statement, it's in your mind. It's like the old lawyer movies, or Perry Mason, or Matlock, those kind of guys, you know, they answer, ask a question, the prosecutor gets up and objects, the other side gets up and objects, and Perry withdraws the question, well, guess what? The jury, the judge already has it in their mind. So you've already created a bias. Those people have, have created a bias when they talk to you, and there's no way you can enter that room and say, I have no opinion, because even though you don't, it's still somewhere in the back of your mind. You know something that everybody else doesn't know. The point of the meeting, the point of the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals, is that you all hear everything at the same time, so that when you form your opinions and make your motions, you do so based upon the evidence presented to you and what you believe as the reasonable person is the best evidence that's provided to you. There's another point, make sure, because, because the law says in your bylaws, in your policies, you must base all your decisions on material evidence and a finding of fact, never, ever, ever allow your planning commission just to say, I move to approve, I move to There is no basis for that motion in the motion. Whoever's making the motion needs to make the motion is, I move to approve this subdivision because of the expert witnesses, from the engineers, from the staff opinions, the staff's recommendation, that it meets all the requirements of those zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, et cetera, et cetera, then, you know, that's good. You've got to remind them. And members of the planning commission and board of zoning appeals don't like to sit there and have to, to regurgitate all of that. But it's necessary for them to do it because you don't want to be overturned on a technicality through a writ of certiorari, which we can talk about in a little bit. On the reverse side of that, especially if you're dealing with subdivisions, and this is where you also have to read the state statute, you cannot turn down a subdivision plat as a planning commission based upon, I move, we approve this subdivision. There's, we'll just say we're a full county subdivision of 15 people. Motion's made, seconded, votes taken, ayes two, nays 13. What's the status of that plat? It was not turned down, according to the state statute. You must date a reason why you turned it down. Now, why is that important? Because you also have to read in the state statute that a plat that is before the planning commission, you must approve it, either approve it or disapprove it within 60 days of the time it hits your desk. If it is not approved within 60 days or disapproved within 60 days, by operation of law, it's approved. So if you just let it lie there and don't take any action on it, then it's approved. By making a motion to approve it that fails, unless you turn around and on the prevailing side and make a motion to disapprove it for a stated reason, then it lies on the table at the end of 60 days, if no other action is taken, it's automatically approved. Now, the 60-day rule is another little quagmire you've got to look at under the statute. It says 60, the planning commission has 60 days to either approve or disapprove, which means you can, as a planning commission, defer one time. And there are reasons to defer a plat all the time. Maybe additional information needs to be gathered, the plat's incorrect, number of different things you can ask for a deferral for. But you've got to remember, when you ask for that deferral, you have to take action that very next meeting. And if you don't, then the plat's approved. But on the other side of the coin, if you tell the developer, that the developer, you have problems with this plat, and if we have to vote on it today, we will probably not be able to pass it because of the, the number of problems, would you, Mr. Developer, like to defer the plat? Most developers will go, hmm, do I want it denied right now, or give me a few, another 30 days to take care of it? They'll take the 30 days. That doesn't go against your 60 days. Because the planning commission didn't defer action, the developer deferred the action. So that's one way to look at the 60-day rule. Also, as staff, when somebody brings a plat to you, you have 30 days to put it on the Staff, and I have to tell you this little bit of a story, a former- Staff and I have to tell you this little bit of a story. A former speaker of the of the lieutenant governor, he was lieutenant governor, was also a developer. He carried a plat to his planning commission, thinking the plat looked pretty good. He turned it in to the staff and the staff said, no, we can't take this. Because, you know, we've changed our curb and gutter. How we want our curb and gutters fixed in the in this this particular jurisdiction. And, you know, your development's near a lake. We want you to knock out this lot to give access to the lake over here. And there are two or three things like that. And basically, the staff told the lieutenant governor, you you need to take this back and redo it. Well, you know, that might be good advice, but guess what? Staff has no authority to refuse to take a plat and put it on the agenda of the planning commission. There's no authorization to do that. If they bring you a plat, and, you know, the old days, they talked about bringing it in on a grocery bag. You know, if they bring you a plat, you're bound to take it and put it on the agenda. You can advise them that, look, this doesn't look like it's going to pass because it has a number of deficiencies. But you still have to take it if they insist on it, because it's the job of the planning commission to either approve it or turn it down. You you make all the recommendations you want as staff, but it's still the job of the planning commission to turn it down. Another job of the planning commission that that I've heard too many people tell me that they do it this way. If the planning commission rejects a rezoning, they say it dies here. It doesn't die there. Because whose job is it to adopt a zoning ordinance and amendments to the zoning ordinance and maps? It's the legislative body. Only they can kill a rezoning or or not approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The planning commission cannot do that. Only the staff, even though you recommend against a rezoning, it still must go to the legislative body. And I've heard way too many stories from planning commissions and staff that, oh, no, it it dies with us. It never dies with you, goes on up through there. So we know that as far as the planning commission is concerned, in a board of zoning appeals, there are certain processes you must go through. And again, when we talk about where you make your decisions, and this is the very most people will shake their heads and go, no, we can't do that. It's just not going to work. We we don't see the reason for it. You know, don't make us, don't even tell us you, we can't do that. And most planning commission members will say, or board of zoning appeals members, well, we went out and looked at the site. And, you know, I think that's human nature. I want to see what what it looks like for myself, you know? And I can't say, you know, when I was a staff person, uh, in looking at subdivision plats, I went and saw every subdivision, every piece of property that was to come before the planning commission board of zoning appeals. And usually walked it with the exception of one, one piece of property. And it was a church that did a lot of snake handling. And I just didn't get out of the truck to go walk around that that building where and I knew they had snakes all over the place. So that was my fear. But, uh, you know, staff people, that's your job to go out there and look. Planning commission members, again, I hate to say it, but it creates a bias when you go look at a piece of property and all the rest of the members of the planning commission haven't looked at it, you walk in the meeting with some type of opinion that the other members don't have. And taking it to the highest level, the courts have said, no, you know, you have to come in with a fresh mind. You have to come in with basically almost no opinion. Another thing that's a terrible situation for a member of the board of zoning appeals or planning commission to do is we have a group of people that are friends and neighbors, and they want to have a community meeting. And they want to talk about this particular rezoning or this development or this use permitted on appeal. And they invite you to come as as a member of the planning commission. Don't go. Because a lot of times, a lot of times, they will press you to say, well, what do you think? What are you going to do? Are you going to protect us? Kind of deal? And if you go out as a member of the planning commission or board of zoning appeals and tell somebody or a group that this will never happen, I will never vote for this. This will be definitely a no from me. And you tell that outside of the meeting of the planning commission, prior to the meeting of the planning commission, what have you done? Well, you, one thing, you've taken away the fairness of the meeting. The other thing is you rendered a decision outside of the meeting before the meeting has ever occurred, so therefore you're in a due process violation. And how do you cure it? I spent an hour at a board of zoning appeals meeting one time, trying to convince a member of the board of zoning appeals, he needed to leave the room. Because he did just that. He announced at a public gathering prior to the meeting that he would never vote for that. It showed a bias of that member, an unfairness to the developer, an unfairness to a property owner that had a right to appear and have a hearing before the board of zoning appeals. The decision was already made. The same thing occurred at a planning commission meeting, which I went to one time. And was ready to have a piece of property approved as a subdivision. And guess what? They had had a work session the night before. A lot of people had work sessions the night, a night or two before they have a meeting, right? They like to have work sessions. It it appears to make things flow better. And, you know, you're supposed to have public hearing notices or a notice, open meeting act notice that you're having that. But you're not supposed to make a decision there. And so that particular night, when I walked in, somebody stopped me and said, well, you might as well go home because they've already voted it down. I said, but that meeting hadn't even started. I said, no, they voted it down in the work session. You can't do that. But people seem to do it because they think they can do it because, oh, with the work session, we we can discuss it and turn it down there. No, you have to turn it down at the planning commission meeting. Uh, I have to say, I'm not a fan of work sessions for that very reason. You know, you're, even though they're open to the public, they're not as well attended as the planning commission meeting itself. And the decision is supposed to be made at the planning commission meeting. So, you know. Another thing is an attorney, uh, in, never ask your attorney, it's either city attorney or county attorney, to go into special session so that the attorney can talk to you unless unless it's an issue that has litigation already pending or litigation threatened onto the planning commission. Because an executive session can only transpire with your attorney, closed meeting, if the litigation is is on on its way to to your door already there. I saw that happen not too long ago, where they asked for a special closed meeting, and they can't have it, kind of deal. So the the planning commission itself, the board of zoning appeals itself, has a number of the the rules that they need to to have. Another another issue with the planning commission is, you know, you're sitting out there and your staff or you're a member of the planning commission and you look at the crowd. And there's Ms. Mary, who is your first grade, you know, teacher, your best friend, John, your, you know, your wife's sister, Mary, you know, all the people you went to church with. There's your minister over there. There's the people from the Qantas Club you're members with, and they're there opposing whatever the rezoning or the subdivision plat or whatever, you know, they're there. The chairman gets a little nervous. You know, he sees this big crowd of people, he sees his friends, he wants to get rid of this thing as quickly as possible. He's, chair asks the crowd, his meeting starts, how many of you are here in support of this development? Well, you got the developer and his engineer on the front row with their hands up. Then he says, how many of you here are against it? And the crowd goes bananas and signs come up, stop the, stop the quarry, stop the subdivision, stop this, stop that. And the chair says, well, it's evident to me that the community does not want this development. So I move to deny whatever it is. Everybody gets up and leaves. And if I was the developer on that, I would turn around and find the first available lawyer in the hall and say, let's sue him. And guess who's going to win? The developer is because, simply because the courts have said planning and zoning is not a plebiscite. It does not go by the number of people that support it or oppose it. It it either is passed or denied based upon the facts, not just by the number of people that oppose something. I've seen it way too many times, uh, where sheer numbers freak out the planning commission or board of zoning appeals and they vote, no, don't do that, kind of deal. So make sure that that kind of situation does not occur. And you make sure that the chair knows or whoever is is, you know, it doesn't have to be the chair, it can be a member of the planning commission or board of zoning appeals. That's improper. Do not allow them to just take a head count and say, based upon this head count, we're going to turn it down. You know, that's another deadly deadly sin that they have, which, by the way, how do you overturn the planning commission or board of zoning appeals? It's by what's called a writ of sursoror, which means bring the record up. The court will grant that writ and then will read the record. They will not take, under common law sursoror, they will not take more evidence. So you don't have to appear before the the judge, the chancellor and testify. The only way the judge is basically going to take more testimony, if somebody alleges, you know, fraud, corruption, you know, there's money being passed under the table, he'll take evidence on it. Otherwise, it's going to be the record. Now, if you want to not be overturned, you must build your record. Your minutes must reflect why you did what you did and the and it must reflect the reasoning that was presented to the planning commission. If, and this happens both for plants and also uses permitted on appeal, if you have a set of rules that you go by, being the subdivision regulations or under a use permitted under appeal or conditional use, you have conditions in the zoning ordinance, and the applicant meets all the conditions, what is the result of that? What can the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals do? They have one solution and one solution only. They have to move to approve. If you meet all the regulations, you must approve it. Now, I'm sitting there going, but you know, yeah, the plat makes all, you know, it's dotted its i's, it's crossed its t's. But, you know, I think we need a berm over here. I think we need a larger setback to separate this this division of land from this use over here or this condominium development from the single family residential. It's not in the subdivision regulations, it's not in the zoning ordinance. Let's do it. Because it's a good thing for the community to do. Can you do it? You're not supposed to. You can't add conditions. You can't add requirements. What you can do is what I call, take the bitter pill. You have to approve it and you go, listen, from now on, we need to add that if this condition appears and we're doing X, Y, Z, then we can ask for a berm or we can ask for a larger setback line. But the key to it is, it's got to be passed and put in your regulations, either the subdivision regulations or the zoning ordinance. You can't make it up as you go. You are not supposed to do planning and board of zoning appeals action by ambush. This is a board of zoning appeals case. God bless Wilson County and the city of Lebanon. Because they messed up so many cases over the years that there's great case law that's come out of Wilson County, Lebanon. This was a guy named Hemantola, and he wanted to put a landfill in. And this was back when landfills, the EPA had just changed their rules. Subtitle D landfills, and if you had a landfill that met the regulations, you could retire, move to Miami, buy a boat and just cruise around the Caribbean all you wanted to because you were going to be a rich person. At that point in time, if you had an approved landfill, that you could sell to one of the big companies down through there. Well, Mr. Hemantola had a piece of property that was adjacent to the present city and county's landfill. Mr. Hemantola was not a dumb person. He went to a very reputable engineering firm out of Nashville and said, would you come and look at my property? Is it suitable? Would it meet the regulations for a subtitle D landfill? Will this work? And so, engineering firm came, ran all the tests. It met the requirements. It was a good piece of property for a landfill. They even went to the commissioner and said, Commissioner, can you grant a permit out of the state for this piece of property? It's a landfill. Will it meet all the state's regulations and EPA's regulations? Commissioner sent a letter back saying, if you submit it to us, we can approve it. So all Mr. Hemantola had to do was go to the Wilson County Board of Zoning Appeals because he was in an, his property was in an agricultural district. And landfills were allowed as a as a matter of appeal before the board of zoning appeals is as a conditional use or use permitted on appeal, whatever you wanted to call it at that point in time. The zoning ordinance of Wilson County at the time allowed landfills as a conditional use. And the only condition in an agricultural district and the only condition was what? It met the requirements of the state of Tennessee. Mr. Hemantola had a letter that said, you meet all the requirements of the state of Tennessee. So he goes to files of the board of zoning appeals. He goes to the meeting with his engineer, and what does Hemantola walk in and see? A room full of neighbors out there who did not want that landfill. Now, I learned something in that by reading that case because some of the adjacent farmers said they didn't want the landfill because old milk jugs would would fly off the the garbage trucks, would fly off the landfill itself and go into their fields and their cows would eat the plastic milk jugs and die. I always thought that was a bunch of malarkey, that if it was goats, I I could believe it, but cows, no. Until I ran into a dairy farmer one time who said, yeah, that's true. So sometimes you actually learn a lot of things that you don't know, uh, a lot of facts at these meetings. But anyway, Mr. Hemantola went to the board of zoning appeals. The crowd was very large. Ninety nine point nine percent against him. And so what did the board of zoning appeals do? Well, they knew that he met the requirements of the state of Tennessee. Well, they knew that he met the requirements of the state of Tennessee, but they added requirements. To his condition. You know, they wanted berms, they wanted additionally take collection systems, they wanted road improvements, all of this kind of stuff, you know? So they approved it with that. Mr. Hemantola thanked them, walked out the door, went to his local neighborhood lawyer and said, time to sue them. Writ a certiorari, the record went up to the chancellor, the chancellor said, no, you can't do that. I'm going to send it back to you to correct your error of your ways, which most chancellors will do. They will send it back to a planning commission or board of zoning appeals to, to let you correct your mistakes. Went back to the board of zoning appeals, another meeting was held, another crowd showed up. The board of zoning appeals freaked out once again. They took away the conditions that they initially put on them and guess what they did? In order to appease the crowd, they added more conditions, different conditions. They went back to the chancellor, the chancellor said, you can't do that. You cannot add these additional conditions because they're not part of your z- conditions under the zoning ordinance now. Point here is many times you will read court cases or have other lawyers tell you, oh yes. You know, the courts have said that if you have some conditions that are paramount to that particular piece of property. You can add those conditions, well, that may be true. But most planning commission or most boards of zoning appeals don't know where to stop on that. They can't stop themselves. So there's that fine line of, can I add this condition or I can't add that condition? My general rule of thumb is don't add the condition, period. Another rule of thumb that I have is on rezonings. If the planning commission recommends a rezoning or a change to the text. Of a zoning ordinance and it goes to the legislative body, goes to the county commission, goes to the city council. And the city council goes, okay, but we want to change X to Y. It has to go back to the planning commission. And the planning commission has to review that. And then send it back with either a recommendation to approve or not to approve or no recommendation to the legislative body. And then the legislative body can make the change and adopt whatever amendment they, they had before them. The planning commission has to review that. There are some courts that will say, if the change is so minor, it wouldn't make any difference. To the legislative bodies passing or not passing it, or the planning commission recommending or not recommending. That, you know, you can go ahead and do it. My opinion is, and this is my opinion, don't do that. Because you don't know where that fine line is. So anything that's a change needs, in my opinion, needs to go back. Subdivision's pretty much the same thing. There's another case, B and B Construction versus the city of Lebanon. Like I said, I love the city of Lebanon and Wilson County's case law because they've, they've set a lot of standards forth. Under B and B. Uh, I always say there's a western, uh, tint to this. Uh, the property was on the western side of the city of Lebanon and it was not inside the city initially. Uh, it was outside, so therefore they went under the, the county zoning and developed a subdivision. It was large lots, it was a rocky area, uh, so they had to put, you know, extra area for, for septic tanks. It had water, uh, but you know, large lots, large houses were built. Years later. Uh, the area adjacent to that subdivision, which had a name of, uh, Ponderosa. Uh, came on the market, it had been annexed by the city, therefore there was sewer there. So there was going to be smaller lots, sewered. And it's, it was called High Chaparral, by the way, or Chaparral. Uh, which, you know, those of us that are a certain age remember, uh, the old western TV shows of High Chaparral and Bonanza and Ponderosa. So like a long story short, the neighbors in the first subdivision objected to that subdivision because it was going to be smaller lots. And they were bigger lots. And the smaller lots were going to have smaller houses and they had bigger houses. So of course they were objecting because of, of, you know, the deal with the valuation, the traffic, you know, the wrong kind of people. They even said that, hey, you know, they're going to build these small houses and it's going to have brick facades on the front. And aluminum or vinyl signings on the side and the rear, they're going to have gravel driveways and the wrong kind of people are going to be there. That whole thing, and this was a whole series. Couple of years worth of meetings that transpired in all this. And what was happening there was the mayor at the time for the city, that was his old ward. When he was a city councilman, so he obviously supported those existing neighbors because they were his constituents down through there. So it finally got, the original developer said, look, I, you know, I've had all, I can't, I can't take anymore. And he sold it, so this other group came in, this B and B construction. Uh, and they proceeded with the development. Got to a one meeting in which, and it was just a series of, you know, amendments to the, to the preliminary plat, passage of a, a phase one. Come back in another amendment to the preliminary plat, a denial of that amendment, a denial of the next phase. So it was an ongoing situation. Went to this one meeting in which. They discussed. The fact that maybe there needs to be a separation of berm between these two sections. They discussed it. But when it came time for the motion, they just moved to disapprove now. Back up a minute, the staff planner. He was a very good friend of mine. Had recommended that it met all the requirements of the subdivision regulations, it had met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. All the, the city engineer, all the other people that were staff that reviewed that, gave it a thumbs up. It's a, it's properly done, but the planning commission moved to deny. Again, they didn't give a reason, they moved to deny. Well, the mayor and the chairman of the planning commission a few days later decided, you know, we should have really said why we did that. So they got together and brought out the little yellow legal pad. And wrote down a bunch of reasons they thought the planning commission, uh, had cause to deny that plat. Did they go back to the planning commission with that and try to amend the minutes? Or reconsider? The motion to deny? No, they just put it in the file. Another little problem that had the city of Lebanon was very frugal. In what they did, so they taped recorded all the me- meetings. Only problem is they taped over meetings. So therefore the quality was never very good on what the. What they transcribed from, from the meeting, from the tape. Tape just wasn't very clear. So. Make a long story short, the city was sued by the developer by writ of certiorari and the court found in favor of the developer. Well, guess who sued next? Who appealed that decision? The city did. They went to the court of appeals with it. Again, on the decision of the Chancery Court on a writ of certiorari, the record. So the record went from the court in Lebanon to the court of appeals in Nashville. To make this even more complicated. The record contained that piece of paper where the mayor and the chairman had written down what they thought was their reasons. The tape was not transcribed, but just sent to the court. And the court had a terrible time listening to it because it was all gobbledygook, you know, they'd go, this is the city of Lebanon kind of deal. And so they had a terrible time of listening to it, they had no, nothing in the record. Uh, for the motion, except they had all, the discussion of all these neighbors who were opposed to it. What did the court of appeals do? Basically, they chastised the city, saying, don't ever send an appeal up here in this kind of condition. We have no basis to make our decisions, it's clear that you made your decision based upon the neighbor's complaint. You can't do this. We've decided this issue in the nineteen twenties. That once it met all the conditions of the subdivision law, the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance. Planning commission, you had no choice but to approve it. Now, another little point that I want to make right there is of course, if it meets all the requirements, you got to approve it. The other point I wanted to make was, the court said, we resolved this in the nineteen twenties. How in the devil did the court resolve this in the nineteen twenties? When the law of subdivision and zoning and planning was not established until nineteen thirty-five? Thank you to our friends in Memphis and Shelby County, because they had a private act. That created them in the twenties, the planning commission, and they had a case similar to this in which. Their planning commission turned something down that met all the requirements, so this has been old law. This has been law, uh, in the books of the state of Tennessee, uh, for well over almost a hundred years, so. Uh, when it comes to, to those type of things, uh, you know, if it meets the requirements, then. It has to be approved. And that's part of my little talk about, you know, the property rights issue. The fairness is what counts here. Each property owner that comes before the planning commission needs to be treated fairly and with due process. So, you know. Let's think about a minute, you know, you're sitting there and all these people are coming and they're opposed to you. And you know, as a member of the planning commission. That what they're saying to you. Is not based upon fact, it's based upon fear and speculation. Nobody's testified that how that's going to devalue my property. Nobody's testified that it's going to make the road situation in front of the development so much worse. Or nobody came from the school system, nobody, hydrologists never showed up or testified on the. On the part of the neighbors to do all this, so why are you listening to them? Isn't that a waste of time? Well. A little personal story, I was, I did a pro bono case over in Murfreesboro one time. A long time, many, many years ago when I was a young lawyer, I mean, that's so, I could tell you about the term of which century I was doing this in. But, uh, the, the kid was being asked to move out of his rental house kind of deal. And, uh, when I went over to see him in the backyard, it was full, full of Great Danes. Actually two of them, but two Great Danes, pretty big, pretty big animals, six foot high fence, all that kind of stuff. And I asked him, I said, you know, these dogs ever bit anybody now, they ever got out? No, ever killed another animal? No, they stay right here in this enclosed area till I get home and then they come inside with me. I said, do you have any idea why your landlord, he wants you to leave? And he said, no, don't have any idea, said, do you have a lease? And he said, I sure do. So I asked to see it and sure enough, middle part of the lease, he disclosed that he had two dogs, didn't say what kind of dogs, he had two dogs. So when we went to trial the, the next day, uh, which was general sessions court in, in Rutherford County. I walked in a few minutes early, uh, which is very unusual for me to get someplace too mu- too much early. But all the benches, these old hardwood and benches, I call them Baptist benches, there's no padding anywhere around them. You know, just hardwood. Walked in and they were full. And it looked like the senior citizen convention. So I walked up to the clerk and I said, how many cases does the judge have today? One, he said, you're it. I said, well, are we have a senior citizen center, uh, visitation to the courthouse today? No, they're here for your case. I figured, well, I'm in big trouble right at that point in time. So we started the trial, uh, and I did the little regular stuff, you know? You know, you, you live at such and such, yes, who's your landlord, little Miss Mary here, do you have a lease? Yes, you have, let me have the lease, made the lease part of the record. Noted that the dogs were there and, you know, that he paid all of his rent, wasn't behind on anything, that had. Kept the place up like he was supposed to, all the good stuff that you're supposed to do. The other lawyer got up and put little Miss Mary on the stand, first thing little Miss Mary said was, asked her, said, well, why do you want, you know, this, this boy to move out of your place? And she said, well, because my in. And as soon as she said in, I knew exactly what was coming, she was fixing to say her insurance agent told her. That if she didn't move, her rates would go up because of those dogs. So, you know, I looked around the room and I thought, unless her insurance agent was eighty-five years old, he wasn't in the room. So I immediately got up and objected to the question as hearsay, because the person who made the statement was not there. So it was a legitimate, uh, motion and the judge ruled in my favor, well. The other lawyer started bringing up the people in the crowd. Why are you here? I'm here to support little Miss Mary because her in, and so I'd object to that each time. And I noticed the judge, he was getting mad. And I thought, hot dog, he's getting mad at that other lawyer for keep asking these questions. And you gotta remember, judges are elected, right? They're elected people, so she would, you know, I thought, you know, he's mad at this guy because he wasting the court's time. And he's asking the same thing and I'm objecting, he's ruling in my favor each time, you know? Why don't the guy shut up and sit down, he's lost, you know, the law was on my favor, I knew it. But every time it happened, I kept looking at the judge and he kept getting madder and redder and redder and redder. And I thought he was going to have a heart attack up there. And finally, you know, dawned on me what that judge was doing. Those people had taken their day to come to that courthouse, to sit on those darned old hard benches. To help their little friend, little Miss Mary and give the court their peace of mind, what's going on? In the process, the judge was letting them speak, but also telling them. Why he was going to, to render a decision the way he did. It was a way to educate. The people of what was going on. Sometimes the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals need to educate. The crowd that's in there, you gotta let them talk and you gotta discuss the issues. So that they understand when they walk out of that room, at least a little bit of why the planning commission or the board of zoning appeals rendered the decision they did. Now, I could go on, uh, believe it or not, I've given this same session, uh, for four hours and I even did one for seven hours one time, but we're not going to do that. Uh, we're going to quit at nine forty-five. And some of you are going, thank goodness that that's the case. But one of the areas that I was asked to. To look at was boards of zoning appeals variances. And what is the legal variance that can be granted in Tennessee? I said earlier. I had the question of a use variance, you can't grant a use variance, you know? You can't grant a height variance, there's a lot, even though people do it. You know, I, I've seen boards of zoning appeals do a lot of strange things. But, you know, and I'm, I'm fond of saying, words have meaning. And, and an old mayor, uh, Mayor Hobbs, I always remember him from the White House. Used to say, you better read it, you better read it, that's kind of how he talked, you better read what it says. And this is what the state statute says for variances. Where by reason of exceptional narrowness. Shallowness or shape of a specific piece of property. At the time of the enactment of the zoning regulation or by reason of exceptional top of racket, top of. At the time of the enactment of the zoning regulation or by reason of exceptional topographic, topographic conditions. Or the other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions of such piece of property. Okay, we're talking about. It has to be a physical characteristic. The property has to be in existence prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance in which you're trying to ask a variance from. And it has to deal with one piece of property. The condition has to exist on a single piece of property. Obviously, a use variance does not fit in that category. The use variance is not based upon the shape of a piece of property. Some states, and this is where the confusion lies, if you practice in some other state. They may very well allow a use variance. But not in Tennessee. It's not something that can happen in Tennessee. So it must meet those conditions. My good friend of mine. Who practices in this area, we used to talk a lot. He would say that. If he took a writ of certiorari, the planning commission case, he had a fifty fifty chance of winning. If he took a variance case on a writ of certiorari, he had a ninety-five percent chance of winning. Because a lot of planning missions won't follow that. The problem is, I'm sorry, boards of zoning appeals. Boards of zoning appeals, your people, your humans, you have a heart. You know, you, you have sympathy to the conditions of what somebody's coming in, the hardship of, uh, a bad. Deal that's been given to somebody and you want to help them. You know, that's why you're there. Let's help them. You know, I've had members of the board of zoning appeals say, well, why are we here if we can't help people? Well, you can only help people if you meet these requirements right here. How many times, I mean, I, I've seen it. I've seen tears. I've seen tears from, uh, grown. Women. I've seen tears from grown men. Um, I've seen people just break down in meetings of. Of the board of zoning appeals and, you know, just. Let their hearts flow out and, and the members are sitting there just, you know. Just shrinking in the, in the fact that we're going to have to rule against this person. But sometimes they don't. You know, my favorite's always been, you know. The couple that come in or the, you know. Man comes in and says, look, I know the zoning ordinance says that I'm only allowed one principal structure on my lot. But my father-in-law just died and I need to move my mother-in-law in and we need to pull a trailer in. And, you know, let her live there, uh, because she's by herself or. My son's wife ran away with the bartender and he's got three kids and we need to move the trailer in so that we can help him move the kid. Raise the kids or the wife ran away with the bartender or, you know, Aunt Mary's by herself now. We need to take care of her. Blah, blah, blah. You've got to help me. You've got to let me move this trailer in and, you know, if you do. And I swear that as soon as, you know, my mother-in-law dies, my father-in-law dies, my. Son gets remarried, my daughter gets remarried, whoever, you know, we'll move that trailer out. Yeah, okay. My trailer's there till, you know, you, you go to court and make them move it. And a lot of times, a member of the board of zoning appeals will have their heart. They're going, you know, I gotta help this person. I understand that situation. I'm going, I'm going to grant that variance. It's an illegal variance. You can't do it. It doesn't meet any of the criteria of why you should grant a variance on the physical characteristic of the property. He's asking you to grant a variance because he has a personal hardship. Another situation I like to, to look at is you are the board of zoning appeals. You cannot. Grant a variance from the subdivision regulations. You deal only in zoning. Another situation, this happened up in our good friends in Knoxville. The building official was approached by a guy that owned a piece of property right off I forty. He wanted to put a billboard up there. Great place to catch all the traffic going to UT football games. Can't miss it as you're going down I forty. Wonderful location. Guy came in and said, look. You know, can I put a billboard here? Building inspector looked at the zoning map, looked at the zoning ordinance and said, yes, you can put a billboard here. So. He granted, yes, you didn't have a building permit. The guy started building his bill, his billboard. Couple of weeks later, here comes some ladies in to visit the building official. Building official goes, you know, what can I help you with? And the little ladies go, you gotta take that sign down. And he went, why? Because, you know, it meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Well, like you said, no, no, said it may, but this road here that's adjacent to it that ties into the piece of property. Uh, it's an scenic highway. And you can't have a billboard on a scenic highway. And he said, I don't know anything about that. And he said, oh yeah, it's a federal law. And so they showed him. Well, he went out there and put a stop work order. Now, the guy that was putting up the billboard, of course he was upset, right? Cause he'd already spent all this money putting this billboard up. He was almost through with it. So he went to the building inspector and said, what do you mean? I have to stop work and take it down. You know, you granted me the building permit. You told me it was okay. Now I'm almost through. I spent all this money. And you're telling me I can't do it. So he went, well, yeah, I, you know, that's right. He knew the guy was upset. He said, well, why don't you go see the county attorney? See if he can tell you what to do. Cause the guy was trying to get him out of his office, obviously. Okay. So he went to the county attorney and I, you know, know the guy, but, uh. Obviously it was not one of his better days. Uh, he said, well, you know, that is our, our fault and. Said, if I were you, I'd go to the board of zoning appeals and tell them I sent you and that, you know, they need to give you some relief. So that's what the guy did. He went to the board of zoning appeals and he said, you know, here's a situation. I was granted the building permit, started building it. Now these little ladies came in and said, I can't have it. And I've been to the, to county attorney and he tells me to come to y'all and you can grant me a variance. So. Chairman of the, of the board of zoning appeals said, well, I guess, you know, that is our fault and. And if the city attorney or county attorney sent you to me, to us, then I guess we can grant that variance. So we're granting the variance. Well, you know, there's only one thing worse. To challenge, um, in court than little old ladies in tennis shoes. Because they're like the proverbial snapping turtle, you know, they grab a hold of you and they'll never let go. Until the issue is resolved. So, you know, they've got, they've got determination and they're not going to stop. They didn't stop with that. They took it to court, all the way to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals basically said, board of zoning appeals, under what authority do you have? To issue a variance under a federal law? You are only authorized to deal with zoning in your jurisdiction. So you get asked as a board of zoning appeals to do many different things. But you can't do it unless it deals with your zoning ordinance, period. You cannot do it unless it's a issue of. The size, shape, or topographic conditions. Here's another instance of this. We all know what East Tennessee looks like, right? We got hills, hills and valleys. Not everything's flat in East Tennessee. But we have this fella in a subdivision. And it's one of those, it's in, you know, the mountainous area, hilly area. Has his house. He goes in and he builds a six car garage. Don't know why, but you know, maybe he has six cars, maybe he's using it for storage. Who knows? But it's sitting in a level place on his lot. His wife. Obviously needed someplace where she could, because of the rain and snow, unload her groceries or the dry cleaning or whatever. So she wouldn't be out in the weather. So he looks around and the only place he could build a carport for her. Would be on one side and it would be in violation of the side yard and the front yard setbacks. So he went to the board of zoning appeals and said, look, I meet the criteria. I'm asking for this variance based upon. All the hilly terrain that's around me because of the shape and the topography of the lot. I need you to grant me a variance. And they looked at that and went, well, yeah, it is based upon topography because this is the only place he could put it. Because of the hilly nature of the lot. So we're going to grant you the variance. Does that sound okay? No, it's not because it was. Not the Pacific piece of property that had the topographic error problem. Everybody in that area had the same situation. So it was not a unique feature. There was no basis for that variance. So any man-made condition, any monetary condition is not a basis to grant a variance. The only basis to grant a variance is the physical characteristic of a Pacific piece of property. And that piece of property was established prior to the zoning ordinance. It is the job of the planning commission. To make sure that every lot that they approve in a subdivision is a buildable site. Now, if you're running into a situation in which, yes, it is an individual lot, it was. It was created prior to the zoning ordinance. Being adopted in the jurisdiction. It has, it's too small, it's weird shape, all that kind of good stuff. You know, I want to build my, I want to, instead of being fifteen foot from the side yard, I want to be a foot and a half from the side yard. I want to be, you know, right, uh, you know, two feet from the front yard and, you know, in other words, I'm taking up the whole darn lot. Put my McMansion on. Does the board of zoning appeals grant that kind of variance? Where, you know, because of the size of the house that he wants to put on. He's taking up a whole lot of variance areas, a whole lot of setback lines. Now, the duty, the duty of the board of zoning appeals is to make sure he has a building site. He does not have a right to ask and receive a variance that is. A total use of the property type of situation. You know, you can make him reduce the amount of area. He's going to put this up in the structure on. Reduce the amount of variance that's required. You have the right to do that. So that he gives him a buildable site. He does not have the right to put the McMansion on the lot. So you can, you can reduce the amount of what the variance is, is looking for. Another situation that I've, that I've seen and had people talk about is the developer comes in and he says, you know, I like this new urbanism. I think it's a fine thing. So I want my new subdivision to come in here and I want. Zero front yard. I'm going to have sidewalks in through there and, you know, have, uh, you know, very little spacing between the structures. Parking in the rear, all the good stuff about new urbanism. So, you know. I know that the city in Door County has not adopted. Uh, anything in their subdivision or zoning ordinance to allow that. So I'll just, if you'll approve this planning commission, I'll go to the board of zoning appeals. And let them grant me a variance on all these side and front yard, uh, situations here. Can that be done? No. No, because it's a newly created lot. You can't do that. You know, how to, how, what's the, the answer for the guy? Well, the guy has to go back to the planning commission and say, look, in order for me to do this. You're going to have to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow this. Another situation on that, on variances sometimes that will occur. Is that the board of zoning appeals will find that, uh, and I remember this on a canopy situation, that every meeting. There seemed to be an applicant to grant a variance on a canopy. Well, they, they, it was not a legal. Variance that could be granted to begin with, period. You know, because it didn't have anything to do with the condition of the lot. It was simply. Because they wanted to build this canopy too close to, to the roadway. And because they had this every meeting. What was the solution? Obviously, there was something wrong with the zoning ordinance. The planning commission needed to look at the zoning ordinance to see if there was something in that zoning ordinance that was. Probably an error or unreasonable to do. Uh, I was seeing them come in and, you know, ask for things. Meeting after meeting because the zoning ordinance had a condition that was probably not a reasonable thing to ask for. And it'd been in the books for a long time and they, they just hadn't looked at it. So. The board of zoning appeals has a duty at that point in time, you know, to say, no, we can't grant that variance, but. Maybe to notify, because they can't do anything about it, notify the planning commission that, look, you know. We've, we've had this problem, meeting after meeting after meeting. Would you look at your own zoning ordinance to see if there needs to be an amendment? Board of zoning appeals can't make it, only the planning commission can. So. Board of zoning appeals variances are very limited. You can only do so much. And, you know. You have to lose your heart, you know, you can't be the good guy out here. Uh, I often tell people. Boards of zoning appeals and planning commissions are going to fail the Dale Carnegie course of how to win friends and influence people. Because if you take that job, then you're bound to have, make people mad. And if you're staff, you don't even have a chance to win friends and influence people. Because you have to make recommendations that somebody's not going to like, kind of deal. So, you know. It's just the tough skin type situation that you have to develop as staff. Staff is. Has to, both on planning commissions and boards of zoning appeals, and I don't know how you get around doing it. It's my belief that staff needs to make recommendations and make written recommendations. Why? Cause it's part of the record. And if we go back to that part of, you know, you have to make your decisions based upon the record. Based upon findings, the facts, material evidence. The staff recommendations at both the board of zoning appeals and the planning commissions. It's necessary for that to be part of the record. And I don't know how you get around not putting. Uh, your recommendations on paper. I mean, heck. I, I have had a friend one time that, uh, he made the mayor mad. And he was ordered not to make any recommendations of any sort at the planning commission. I always thought that was the perfect job. The guy got paid. He didn't have to review anything. He just had to attend the meeting and introduce what was going on. You know, this is a plat. Um, he wasn't allowed to make recommendations anymore. Uh, you know, you think that's a perfect situation, but you know. The guy couldn't take it after a while and said, look, you know, huh, I'm leaving. I'm going to get a job that, you know. That I, I feel worthwhile for. So, you know, that's your job. That's part of why you're doing what you're doing. And part of why you went to school to do what you're doing. I have taken, according to my. Watch, I'm two minutes before nine forty-five.
I was thinking we could go ahead and start with questions. Since we got a little bit started late. We've got several in the chat and I want to make sure we can get at least a few of these in now. I'll, I'll, uh, do my best to, uh, read these questions in the context in which they were posted. Uh, Helen posted a question a while back and asked if a planning commission denies. A rezoning, I think she's talking about a rezoning. Does it take a super majority of the council to pass it?
Yeah, it does. Takes more than a, a simple majority if it's a denied, uh, request.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question, it says, does the same thing apply to county commissioners? So I think Roger Varan was. Was asking if some of the, um. The requirements of the planning commissioners and Boarding Zoning Appeals, looking at material evidence, looking at the facts. Does that also apply to commit county commissioners, the elected officials?
Elected officials? No, actually. The courts give the, the elected officials a lot more leeway. Uh, both city councils and county commissions. Uh, the courts have said, you know, we're not going to put ourselves in the place of the elected officials. Elected officials are the best place to make these decisions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. As long as you have a scintilla of reason. You're doing it as an elected official, the courts are going to oppose you. It's, it's when you violate due process. Uh, and that type of situation that they're going to overturn you. As long as there's a reason. They, and it doesn't again, again have to be the right reason. It could actually be wrong. But as long as the legislative body states a reason why they're doing something, then the courts will. Uh, uphold the legislative body. The material evidence rule and the finding of fact. Is for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission. It doesn't apply to the legislative bodies. It should, but they don't because, hey, they're elected officials. They're special. And then also on that same line, on the situation that we talked about. Um, where somebody wants to talk to you outside the meeting, they're, you know, the planning commission. And the city can have a city council person and the mayor. Um, also on the county planning commission can be members of the legislative body on the planning commission, of course. Exparte communication. When they have their hat on as a legislative person, then they can do ex parte communication. You know, as a member of the legislative body. Because, you know, the constitution says you have the right to redress, to redress to your, to the city council, county commission. But when they have their planning commission hat on, they got two hats. But when they have that planning commission hat on, they've got to follow that, that ex parte communication and not talk to people. So. There's a situation where, you know, a member of the county commission or the city council. Having two different functions have to act differently. Within that. So I thought I'd add that with the, but no, the, the city council, the county legislative body. Uh, then are not held to the standard of, you know, material evidence.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, Brian Richter asked if. A planning commission can request that an applicant agree to adding a condition in the meeting. Um, and if the applicant agrees, could it then be added?
Yeah, well, you know. Uh, you can agree to anything, uh, like that. You've got to be careful. You've got to be careful on that, that you aren't violating a taking clause on that. Uh, asking them to do something that the government should have paid for to begin with. Uh, and, you know, that's, that's going to be deemed to be a taking. And a violation of the fifth and fourteenth amendments, okay? And, and also the state constitution. So if the applicant, during the meeting, if the applicant says, well, sure, I'll add X Y Z. You know, I don't have a problem with that. You know, that's his volition. Uh, if you say, you know, we're not going to approve this unless you give us this space for a. Uh, fire station, you know, we got a problem with that.
Okay. Um, does reading someone's opinion on an online community site meet the bias restriction? Is this a case of needing to make a statement at the planning commission meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if you. You know, read the little community. Uh, yeah, I mean, there's a number of those. Here's the neighborhood association webpage. Here's this and that. You know, if you go in there and read that and they have this commentary about, you know, X Y Z, why we don't want this happening. Then yes, that's an ex parte communication. Uh, the members of the planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals should not read that. And if they do, then they would have to come in and disclose that.
Okay, that's good. Donovan asked if a BZA member. Receives thirty resident emails. Uh, does that person need to read all of them at the meeting?
Oh, yeah. Unless they're all, you know, and I've, I've seen this, you know, it's a form letter. And, you know, they say the same thing. Uh, you know, if that's the case, then you read one. Read one of them and say, I got this from blah, 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 blah. You know. You don't have to read every one of them if they're just a repeat. If there are thirty. That are separate statements and not just a form letter. Then, yeah, they're going to stand up there and read the whole thing and make them part of the record. That's another reason why you say, you know. Uh, what I do, if somebody says, you know. Uh, I'm going to send you an email. I said, no, don't send me any emails. Send the chair or the staff an email so that they can read it. At the start of the meeting, not me.
Okay, uh, Bradley Hickman asked if a resident, I have a resident that built a large accessory structure. Too close to the rear and side property lines. So there's an encroachment into the setbacks. It was built without a permit and the structure is almost done. What can be done legally, if anything, to allow this? So he can be issued a permit with a penalty.
Legally to allow him to do it? I'd say the choices unless he meets the requirements of, you know, too narrow, too small, topographic conditions. He can't be granted appearance of that. The only, the only solution is to put a stop work order and have the courts order him to remove it. An injunction to remove. That's where you have to be heartless. Uh, and you have to be, you know, it's got to go because you built it at your own risk. Uh, you know, there's constructive notice that you should be getting a building permit. You didn't do it. You built it too close. We can't, unless it met one of those conditions. Of, you know, the hardship of too narrow, too small, uh, and it was, the lot was created prior to the zoning ordinance. And, um, you know, all of that, then you, there's no solution. It's got to come down.
All right. Let's do one more. We'll do one more question and then take a ten minute break. Leslie asked if you can summarize state law regarding faith-based institutions and their ability to use their property for housing. How do local zoning codes impact the authority of these institutions to use their property for uses such as housing? That they believe will fit their mission?
Well. A number of years ago, the Tennessee General Assembly passed the Tennessee Religious Freedom Act. Uh, and it's part of the state statute, Tennessee Religious Freedom Act. We're all familiar with the federal law. That basically said, you know, local governments, you cannot substantially burden. Uh, a group's practice, religious practices. You can't substantially burden. Under the federal law, substantially burden actually means. You can regulate them. You just can't turn them down and you can't make them do something that's against their religious beliefs. Basically. Under the state statute. Substantially burden is totally different. It's inhibiting. You cannot inhibit it or curtail. My practice of religion, all right? First off, you know, it's up to them to prove. To the building official or the Board of Zoning Appeals, one, that they are a religion. That they do have some type of, uh, belief or doctrine. Through there. They've got to establish themselves as a religion. If they've done that. And then they have a doctrine that says, you know, we, we believe that we need to provide housing for the homeless. Uh, food, shelter, that kind of thing. And therefore we're going to build, uh, in classic examples, town, tiny homes. You know, we're building the town, tiny homes. That's directly out of Nashville. From the Methodist Church out of Nashville. Uh, I believe that was Glen Cliff United Methodist Church that did that. They had extra property. They went in and they got approval. They went to the bill, the codes official and said, you know, we're a religious group. Here's our doctrine. Blah, 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 blah. We believe we need to build these homes so that the homeless can come in and. Basically, uh, have a place to live, you know. If you want to get a job. And one of the things that's on the application is your address. The mail's not generally delivered underneath Jefferson Street Bridge. You know, so they need an address a lot of times to do that. So the simple answer is if the church has a doctrine that says that we're there to help people. And that one of the things they're going to do is build housing. Then I think that there's a probably. Well over a ninety percent chance that any court will grant that. And say that as a religious institution, they are free to do that. It cannot be substantially burdened by the, by the locals, jurisdictions, zoning ordinance. I can see that happening a lot in group housing. Coming in, you know, if it's a. Unit of eight, not going to have more than eight, uh, residents in there, then it's got to be treated as a single family. But in a lot of these situations, they're going to have multiple structures. They're going to have multiple people living in there. You have to prove that they are a religious group and that that's part of their mission. And that's what the courts have said. If it's part of their doctrine and mission, then they fall under the Tennessee Religious Freedom Act. The senators and house members that passed that law. Still believe that all they did was pass it so that, uh, church schools could get funding. Well, that's true. That's part of it. But they also added that substantially burden part. So a lot of churches. And, you know, they've, I'm not talking about necessarily Methodist Baptist, you know, Catholics. Uh, people of the Jewish faith. It can be any type of, uh, religious group. That can prove that they have a doctrine and a belief in membership. You know, so you can have some far out different, uh, religious groups that are going to apply under that doctrine. And under the state statute, it's legal. So, yeah, that's going to happen. So if, if it is a recognized. If they can show themselves as a religious group with a doctrine, they're going to be, uh, under the Tennessee Religious Freedom Act. And allow to, to build these things outside of the zoning ordinance. So I hope that answers your question. It depends on the circumstances, but it's going to happen.
Thank you, Sam. That was, uh, that was great. Thank you for all the information and the stories that you provided and hopefully that was valuable to the section. Thank you. We'll take a ten minute break and then we'll be back and let Bill jump in.
Yeah, Bill, Bill's always good. All right. Y'all take care.
Thanks, Sam.
Bye-bye. Bye bye.
Okay, we're going to get started again with our next speaker. It's Bill Terry. He currently works as a freelance planning consultant and comprehensive planning and land use controls, growth policy legislative issues. And he also works as a lobbyist for our statewide chapter. He has a long and storied professional career in Tennessee dating back to nineteen seventy, when he began working for the Tennessee Local Planning Office. From nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and three, he was the planning director for the city of Goodlettsville. Bill made significant contributions to the passage of the Tennessee Growth Management Law of nineteen ninety-eight, which led to the creation of urban growth boundaries and planned growth areas. He was also inducted into the AICP College of Fellows in twenty sixteen. And we appreciate Bill's continued service to the chapter and look forward to his session today.
Is it Tom?
I'm going to turn it over to you, Bill.
Okay. I don't know how many of you get this. It's my legislative update that I send out during the legislative session. And it's a summary of any kind of bill that might affect planning and planning commissions and votes appeals in some way. It's just not always related directly to planning, but it's somehow affected planning. So that's today, I'm just going to go over that summary from last, from the earlier this year. And talk about a few things like that. I do want to point out that at the annual meeting, the Tennessee Chapter Executive Committee voted on a bill to oppose, and this was the third party review bill that allowed a third party other than the city or the county or the state to inspect building plans and site plans. And it's in the general subcommittee in in the House. Senate. Couple of things to remember about legislation, more than two, actually. Just to generally introduce this stuff. A caption bill is is introduced anytime. If you want to pass a bill, it has to have a caption. Caption has to be related to the body of the bill. And what legislators do these days is introduce a bill with a broad caption, open it up several titles of the Tennessee Code. And then they will file an amendment when it comes up in committee. It comes under the caption, but it changes the whole body of the bill. So you really don't know what the bill is going to do until the committee decides to release it. And a couple of other things to remember. Taken off notice is a term used in one of the bills before a committee. That's when the sponsor detects that the votes are not there to pass it. So the sponsor will just take it off notice. It can be brought back up. Any bill taken off notice can be brought back up. Excuse me. In the Senate, the terminology is placed in a general subcommittee. So if it's placed in the general sub, it kills it for that particular time, but it can be brought back up. And another term is held on the desk. It's held on the desk in order to sponsor it to file an amendment. It can be taken off the desk at any time. So you've got several bills that came up this year that have those kinds of actions. They're taken off notice. They were put in general sub. They were held on the desk. Now, I'm going to go through these one by one. Senate Bill Seventy-five by Watson. And House Bill by Lambert. It deletes the requirement that a municipality adopt a comprehensive growth plan and have an approved growth boundary prior to annexing unincorporated territory. Opens up all the statutes that relate to growth plans and will stop them. To say that a plan adopted under this section must not vest a municipality with the power to exercise any planning or zoning authority over unincorporated areas of a county outside of its jurisdictional boundaries. And so that what the amendment did, it could still be amended again, of course, it will, it was rolled in both houses to twenty twenty-four. So it'll be brought up sometime in January. Another plan bill. Senate Bill four twenty-seven. As introduced, it requires that recommendations submitted by a regional historic zoning commission regarding the creation of historic district or zone identity identify the statutory criteria boundary. That's this broad caption. It opens up one, two, three, four, five, six, seven titles of Tennessee Code. It's one of those that's held on the desk waiting for an amendment. Senate Bill eleven forty-seven by Hensley. As introduced, it would prohibit the state and local political subdivisions from adopting or implementing policy recommendations that deliberately or inadvertently infringe or restrict private property rights without due process, as may be required or traceable to Agenda Twenty-One, if all of you remember what Agenda Twenty-One was. The bill was amended. And the amendment prohibits the state and political subdivisions from adopting or implementing recommendations that deliberately or inadvertently infringe or restrict on private property rights. And further prohibits the state and political subdivisions from entering into an agreement expending any sum of money providing financial aid to those governmental and intergovernmental organizations accredited. It passed the Senate. And it passed the House. It is now public chapter four seventy-nine. That may impact you at the local level. Under the heading of zoning, Senate Bill five fifty-nine states that property owners should expect that a permit application will be judged on the law in effect at the time of the application. declares that the General Assembly rejects a pending ordinance doctrine. Pending ordinance doctrine was subscribed by the Tennessee Supreme Court in May of two thousand and seven in the case of Harding Academy versus the Metropolitan Government of Nashville. It's kind of a dangerous bill for both rural and urban counties. That many small rural counties having those zoning. Bill states that the merits of the permit application shall be judged on the law in effect at the time of the application. Recommends that the General Assembly reject the pending ordinance doctrine. Do you understand what a pending ordinance doctrine is? No. The case that legitimized that Harding Academy. The school wanted to expand in a residential zone. And the district council person was listening to their constituents decided to pass a bill in Metro Council to stop that. In order to stop it, it had to be a pending pending ordinance, pending doctrine. So they did that. They got sued. And they lost. So the pending doctrine is still applicable. It passed the Senate, it passed the House, it's now public chapter four fifty-three. Next bill is Senate Bill three forty-three. Companion House Bill, of course. Designates concentrated animal feeding operations as defined by federal regulations as industrial land use for zoning purposes. Don't think they can do that, but it, they did it in the bill. It's in, it was not heard in the Senate and it was sent to the planning subcommittee in the House and sits there. It'll be brought back up, probably. Next bill. Senate Bill eleven twenty-eight on zoning. Before acting as zoning ordinance or any amendment, the chief legislative body shall publish notice of a public hearing to consider the ordinance or amendment on its website if available at least fifteen days in advance. That's of course a caption bill and it's held on the desk. Annexation bills. Senate Bill two oh six deletes an obsolete provision that temporarily prohibited a municipality from annexing territory by ordinance and require a review and evaluation of annexation laws. It's a caption bill. It's held on the desk. Be brought back up. Same deal here, Senate Bill six thirty-four. Increases from three to four the number of copies of plan of services that a municipality must provide for public inspection in connection with a proposed annexation. It's held on the desk. Ending bill, that's a caption bill. Next bill. Senate Bill eight fifty-one by Watson. Annexation. Now this one passed. It allows owners of real property used primarily for agricultural purposes who reside in the territory previously annexed by ordinance to petition the municipality to de-annex the property if some portion of the real property lies within one mile of municipal boundaries. And then basically basically the bill does not require a municipal utility to cease providing electrical service, sewer service, et cetera. Bill provides that municipal jurisdiction cases also upon the operative date of the contraction accomplished through a petition by the owner of the property or used primarily for agricultural purposes and only allows the municipality to levy and collect taxes on property and excluded territory. Now, there were two amendments. There was a amendment to it in the Senate. And there was a different amendment to it in the House. So they had to appoint a conference committee when they went to the Capitol. The report was adopted, but it's not assigned a public chapter number yet. Other types of bills other than those. Senate Bill twenty-five by Hensley. It increases the initial tax rate authorized for privilege of residential development under the County Powers Relief Act from one dollar per square foot to three dollars per square foot. And deletes a preemption provision related to certain privileged taxes. It was held in committee in the Senate and withdrawn in the House. Here's one on open meetings. It did pass. As introduced, requires governing bodies to make agendas of meetings and supplemental meeting documents available to the public at least forty-eight hours prior to a meeting. There's several provisions on it. But the amendment that actually rewrites the bill to require the legislative body or local government make available to the public at no charge at least forty-eight hours prior to a meeting the agenda for the upcoming meeting and place accessible to the public. Publication on the legislative body's website is not required, but will satisfy this amendment's notice requirement. Amendment specifies that if the local government legislative body may deliberate and act on matters not listed on the agenda, the body follows its program. Complies with the Constitution. Then it is passed. It's now public chapter two thirteen. Last bill. I've got on my list. Senate Bill eight thirty-two. Deletes reference to the Director and Secretary of State Planning Office, which was abolished in nineteen ninety-five as a member of the State Consolidation Committee for Consolidation of Counties. The bill was amended in the Senate. It apparently applies to Metro Nashville and prevents the council from voting on financing of and use of public-private partnership for public facilities. To Metro Nashville and prevents the council from voting on financing of and use of public private partnership for public facilities. By a super majority to acquire the vote by simple majority. It passed Senate, passed the House, it is now public chapter three fourteen. That's my summary.
Thank you, Bill. We can take any questions you have. One of the things that has come up for Franklin recently is the change in state law to. Require citizens to speak at really any public meeting where items are considered. So that's changed how we run our meetings to some degree. With the addition of citizen comments, so can you share a little bit about that bill and kind of what you're hearing around the state?
And where is it?
I'm not sure exactly what the bill number was, it's just the change to allow citizen comments in every meeting.
I saw a comment from Leslie Meehan, she wants to know if I can send this out by email. Yep. Anything else?
I'm not seeing anything else in the chat. There is a question about citizen comments at every meeting. And what was it before? I think I was referring to. Citizens being able to speak on really any agenda item. When in the past, unless it was a public hearing, there there wouldn't be comments related to that item.
Yes, Sam, I think over there, if they want to speak on an item, they should be allowed to speak. You can limit the time.
That's right.
Three minutes, something like that.
Dale, do you have a question?
No, I don't have one at this time.
Okay.
I think another one came in.
No, that was me just wanting to be included on your mail out of the your your recap there, Bill.
Okay.
I put my email address in the chat.
Okay, just have everybody that wants to get it, give me their email.
It looks like another question has come in that. That's asking. If. Can you speak more to the legislation that says city cannot inadvertently reduce someone's property rights through a zoning change?
Now, that's what one of these bills does. It sets up the cannot reduce the value of piece property.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm getting a lot of email addresses in the chat. What I can do is just email everybody who's on the call a copy of the legislative report. As a follow up to this email.
I'll send it to you and you can send it out. Is that all right?
That sounds good. Yes. Okay. I don't.
Hey Andrew.
Yep, go ahead Ian.
We have a question from Amanda. Who asks, can we discuss a little bit about sunsetting on zoning changes?
Oh, it was a question.
Can we talk a little bit about sunsetting on zoning changes? I will put the question in the chat for everyone.
The legislation law does not specify a time limit. Now, I think practicality, there is a time limit, but the law doesn't say you've got thirty days to approve this or fifty days. In the subdivision section of Tennessee code where the subdivision regulations are authorized. There is a section that says a planning commission must approve or disapprove a plat within sixty days of its submittal date. And that means you got to act on it.
Okay, well, it seems like we've. Gone through the questions, so we can move on to the next topic if Andrew Mills is ready, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Yeah, we're a little ahead.
If you're ready, I'll introduce you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm ready when you are.
Okay, well, wonderful. Thank you, Bill. We appreciate. Your expertise and keeping us informed on legislative changes. It's always something.
That's back in January.
Be here before we know it. Andrew Mills is a partner at Reynolds Potter Reagan and Van de Vort PLC. He grew up in Dixon, Tennessee, or he practices in Dixon, Tennessee. And has practiced law in Tennessee for over ten years. He grew up in Middle Tennessee and is a graduate of the Memphis School of Law in Belmont University. A large portion of his and his firm's practice focus on representing governmental entities. And that includes several in Middle Tennessee as well as utility districts. Mr. Mills has litigated numerous issues involving local governments in both state and federal courts at trial and on appeal. So we appreciate, Andrew, we appreciate your time and sharing your experiences and expertise with us today. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Andrew, and thanks to the other speakers this morning. I'll try to do a decent job following them. Andrew, can I share my screen? I've got a PowerPoint.
Yep, you should be able to.
All right. It says host disabled.
Okay, let's see if that does it for you.
All right, I think we've got it, start playing it. All right, so today I was asked to talk about best practices with rezonings and annexations, so this is. Going to focus on planning commission action. But it could be useful for governing bodies as well because ultimately they. They make the final determination on annexations and rezonings. I'm going to look at this through the legal lens of how does an action. By a planning commission and governing body to rezone or annex property or properties, how's that challenged? What are we concerned about? And really, if anything that you take from this presentation today is that. How can you help your attorney defend your action? So we're going to look kind of the first part today at what is the law? How is an action challenged? And then we're going to talk about specifics in rezonings and annexations and just some things I've seen. Practically that that can help you make informed conscientious decisions. Under the law, so. There's basically two types of planning commissions. I'm sure you're aware, there's your municipal planning commission. The statute outlines its authority, its membership, et cetera. And then there's regional planning commissions, those are your county commissions, you can also have multi-jurisdictional regional planning commissions. Those aren't as popular as maybe they used to be. So. I encourage you to look at your enabling statute because that's where your power comes from. I think Sam touched on this a little bit. You know, the federal government doesn't give you your power. You are a political subdivision of the state of Tennessee. The legislature, the General Assembly gives you your authority. And what authority they don't give you, it's presumed you don't have. So that's part of the big limitations that planning commissions and BZAs have. So I've got the bullet point list there on the PowerPoint, but those are some of the big. Powers that plenty commissions have. You have the power to make reports and recommendations to the governing body about community development. Recommend building and financing programs, require public officials to furnish requested information. I've had one issue with that before and you had to look that up. Adopt an official general plan for the government's physical development. If you don't have an official one, your zoning ordinance actually operates as your general plan. Before construction, approve the location. And extent of streets, parks, public spaces, public buildings, public and private utilities. If you were here last year, one of the topics I got to talk about was the surety bond process. And ultimately, your governing body is going to take in these public improvements, but the process starts with the planning commission, with you making these determinations of. Approving Platts, approving site plans. Planning commissions also adopt and administer the subdivision regulations, that's kind of entirely within your control as a planning commission. There's a few out there that have combined their subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance. But for the most part, most planning commissions are in charge of their subdivision regulations, so that's a really big responsibility. And then they certify the zoning plan to the governing body, that includes the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. And and that's going to be a big focus today, obviously, is the backbone of any zoning ordinance is the zoning map and a rezoning. Is a change to that map. It is a change to the law, so all of this, your annexations, your rezonings are examined. As as a law. You know, again, last year, one of the things talked about was a writ of certiorari, Sam talked about it earlier today. And you know, he's talking about the record and everything that comes in before the planning commission or the BZA. And then if that gets challenged, it goes to the trial court, but really the trial court is the planning commission and BZA, you're creating the record. Sam said it, and I absolutely agree, no new evidence comes in. This is an entirely different area. This is this is legislative, this is not administrative. So. Let's. Let's look at a little bit of the case law, just so you know where your attorney's coming from, what you need to be aware of and concerned about. So unlike a writ of certiorari, a challenge to a law passed by a governing body is usually challenged by what's called a declaratory judgment action. And that simply is an action filed typically in Chancery Court. Asking the court to declare that the law is illegal. Set the law aside. You know, governing bodies pass legislation, again, an annexation is legislation, a change in the zoning map, a rezoning is legislation. These governing bodies do not apply previously enacted law to an applicant. That's what planning commissions and BZAs do. They are taking the laws passed ultimately by the governing body and applying it, but a rezoning or an annexation is treated much more broadly. These laws are subject to scrutiny like any other law, so for example, if. The county commission or the town council passed a law saying everyone in the town must wear top hats. That's probably going to be invalidated by the court for a number of reasons. If they passed a law that the major thoroughfare in the town is five miles per hour, that's going to fail for a number of reasons. So there are limits to this, but fortunately, laws are given pretty significant deference by the courts. But that, again, that's not without limits. So a couple of cases that are often cited and used in. In evaluating rezonings and annexations, the city of Lebanon. Versus Baird case, I think Sam may have even talked about this. They found that under Tennessee law, a municipal action may be declared ultra vires for either of two reasons. Because the action was wholly outside the scope of the city's authority under its charter or a statute. Or because the action was not undertaken consistent with the mandatory provision of the charter or statute. And really that means, did you have authority to do it? And did you follow the procedure in doing that? Both things we're going to talk about today. Another case that's a little bit older, both of these are Tennessee Supreme Court cases, but the city of Memphis. Versus Miller, they addressed. Challenges to local ordinances or resolutions. The primary question in every case. Is number one, has the municipality expressed or implied authority? And two, does the ordinance promote the public health, moral, safety, convenience and comfort of the general public? And the general welfare. So all of this is building towards the doctrine of substantive due process. Under Tennessee and federal constitutions, this doctrine requires that there be a rational relationship. Between the subject of the regulation and the manner in which it is regulated. That's so, so that's what you're looking at. If I'm challenging a law, again, I go through a declaratory judgment action, I file a petition in Chancery Court, that's the legal vehicle. And I'm going to probably argue, number one, that there's been a substantive due process violation. So. The the hard part for anyone challenging it is that the courts are very deferential to to these laws. One of the first cases that ever addressed this issue with regard to property rights, and I know Sam talked about Memphis being the first to have. Zoning, but it's a Tennessee Supreme Court case from nineteen twenty seven, nearly a century ago. They found that the legislature may impose any limitation upon the use of property which it deems necessary or expedient to promote. And protect the safety, health, morals, comfort and welfare of the public. Courts do not determine whether the policy was wise or foolish. They can't insert their judgment, they're just, that determination is left to the legislature, those are the elected officials. They get to decide what's what's wise or foolish in this legislation, but there has to be, and this is what we're building to in this this analysis, the rational. Basis, there has to be a rational basis and that test is what courts in the modern age use to judge any ordinance that you pass or a resolution. For counties, so any law of any local government that is challenged is viewed through this lens. While they are deferential, it's not without limits. One of the most often cited cases is a Knox County case, Tennessee Supreme Court nineteen eighty three. They found that the exercise of zoning power should not be subjected to judicial interference unless clearly necessary. The court cannot substitute its judgment. Again, these are all good things to protect your action as the governing body. And as the planning commission making those recommendations. So there just has to be a rational or justifiable basis for the enactment. If you take anything from this slide, take this last bullet point. Whenever you're making a recommendation or a decision, whether you're the planning commission or the governing body, ask yourself this question. If you can answer it, you're probably going to be okay. But that's the question there, whether any possible reason can be conceived to justify the ordinance, that is. Whether its legislative classification for zoning purposes is fairly debatable. So there was recently a case that really went into the details of this because often I get asked, what is a rational basis? What can I use to justify a rezoning? What can I use to justify denying a rezoning request or an annexation request? So Bedford County got into a dispute with a landowner, the landowner sued Bedford County. This was at the Court of Appeals level, they decided in twenty eighteen. And you can see the facts kind of bullet pointed there on the screen. The landowner had a piece of residential property that he wanted to rezone to C two. It came up through the planning commission, it was. Voted favorably, it came up that way at the first meeting of the governing body. They deferred it, didn't take any action on it. At the second meeting. They. They had a motion to approve the rezoning, there was a second, and then the motion failed. And that was it, there was really no discussion. It failed, they moved on. The landowner sued, the Chancery Court found in in favor of the landowner, he sued for everything under the sun, including a declaratory judgment action. And the court reversed the Bedford County Commission and. And uh awarded uh the landowner over ninety thousand dollars uh ultimately in in co- compensatory damages, attorney's fees. Interest and 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 costs. So. The that went up to the Court of Appeals, Bed- Bedford County appealed it, and the the Court of Appeals reversed uh in a in a fairly uh. Interesting case that got into public comment and what can be used and what can't. So again, they said our review is limited. To whether any rational basis exists for the legislative action, and if the issue is fairly debatable, it must be permitted to stand. And so they talked about, there wasn't a lot in the minutes, uh but they talked about, there was a lot of. Community opposition, and I know Sam talked about this from the writ of cert standpoint, when you're looking at Platts. And site plans, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that later, but. Community opposition can be a basis for a denial. Now, the court went on to to put a finer point on that, and that last bullet point on this page. That's what they found. They found that factually based neighborhood opposition articulated through statements made before the governing body is part and parcel of the consideration of the rezoning request. Now, that's factually based statements made at a public meeting. So opinions, um. Statements outside of a public meeting, I would argue those shouldn't be factors, uh but factually based. Uh statements uh articulated before the governing body. Uh and I would also argue that can't be your sole reason, but it can be a reason. It helped you get there. The court was almost saying, look, we understand that at the governing body level, politics are involved. Sam talked about it earlier. Elected officials and the governing body are going to talk to the applicant. They're going to talk to um those who uh are for it or opposed to it. Uh and that's fine. It it's ultimately, again, you're passing a law, you're going to get uh, you know, quote lobbied. Uh by people who are emailing you, calling you, catching you after the meeting. That that is perfectly fine. Uh but you need to base, give give your attorney something in the record. Say. You know, uh. There's a sinkhole in the property, and that was brought to my attention by the public. That's a factual statement, and you get to use that um in your. Determination of whether to approve or or deny past this law. Um. This is not a show of hands. Uh again, it it you, I think you have to base it on factor. You're going to find yourself in a little bit of trouble. Um. So that that's a good case. I encourage you, if you want, if you're into reading legal uh cases, to read it. Uh it gives a really good analysis on on what happens when you deny rezoning and what can you use, what can't you use? Um one other brief note, this has come up a couple of times uh about equal protection, particularly when you're dealing with rezonings. Someone will say, hey, you rezoned a one acre parcel of land, you upzoned it, uh. Why won't you upzone mine? They're nearly identical. Uh I think you're you're treating me differently, and and frankly, uh. My typical answer, depending on the situation, and you need to, of course, talk to your attorney before making the determination, is you can. Real property is unique. Every clot of dirt is unique. Um. You look at the surrounding zoning, you look at the roads, you look at everything you can. And there's no piece of property that's going to be exactly like another, so you can treat uh different properties differently. Uh one little wrinkle to that is the uniformity clause. Uh state law that only applies to counties in that you can't have. Different uses in a single zoning class classification across the board. It has to be consistent. If you're zoned R one or Ag or C one. You can't allow properties to have different uses. It has to be consistent across the board. Now, no case has ever interpreted that. Um. I don't know ultimately what would would happen with that, but uh that's just something to keep in mind, but you you look at each application for rezoning uh. Uniquely individually and and make a make a determination. Um so let's talk about the rezoning process a little bit. Um. And 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 look at what what you're going to be dealing with a a little bit more. Um I think I just went one screen too far. Hold on. Yeah. So again, look at your uh origination or uh ordinance. Um. Sorry, your your organic statute that gives you your authority uh and look at what the zoning ordinance can do. It regulates. Buildings in in all different ways, percentages, um size of yards. It it's pretty all encompassing. Your zoning ordinance can get as particular as you want or need it to be. But when you change a zoning ordinance, it has to start at the planning commission level. That's that's state law. Um. You have to start at the planning commission level, and they are going to make a recommendation um up to the the governing body. Uh that's ultimately going to be what happens. Now, and if Sam touched on this, I'm going to push back on him just a little bit. If the planning commission approves uh of the rezoning, it goes up to the governing body. Uh it's a simple majority uh by the governing body to rezon it. If they disapprove. It's not a two thirds, except for in certain uh charters. It has to be a majority of the members. And the difference between that is if you only have three of five council members show up. A two to one vote rezones it if it was favorable uh at the planning commission. That same vote uh would not pass uh if the planning commission uh had a disfavorable recommendation. Because even though it's two one, that's two out of five. You didn't get to the three, and that's an interesting recall that rarely comes up, but. Uh I I I don't think it's a super majority. I think it's, th- these are in both of the. Uh organic statutes for both county commissions and municipal planning commissions. Um it's a it's a majority. Of the the of the body itself, uh not of the quorum. Metro Government, for example, they require a two thirds vote by the legislative body to override an unfavorable recommendation. So once it goes up to the governing body, they have two readings if your municipality fifteen days notice published in the paper for the public hearing. Uh uh again, this is, I'm gearing this towards a planning commission, but that's what happens next. County commissions. Only have one resolution uh in the public hearing, still fifteen days notice. Um. So. In the adoption process, I'm going to put some finer points. I didn't know Sam was going to talk about it, but uh Sam talks about a lot of things uh in in a great way. But I'm going to put a finer point on the change um. In the zoning ordinance uh between planning commission and governing body uh levels. I agree with Sam that the. The best course of action is to send it back. If if there is a change between when the planning commission acted favorably or unfavorably. Send that zoning ordinance back if it gets changed by the governing body. Now. The test for that came out of this Tennessee Supreme Court case against Knox County, where they put a two part test together, the gravity of the revision. And whether the board's recommendation would have been altered by the revision. Now, that gets into the hypothetical world. Um and. You know, how can you accurately judge if the planning commission uh would have changed? I've always used the litmus test of if it's simple edits, you change an and to an or maybe, that's probably okay. In this context, in rezoning, if if an applicant is zoned, say, R one, and they want R two zoning. And it gets up to the the governing body, and they say, no, we really want commercial in this area. Let's rezone them to commercial. That's inappropriate for two reasons. One, the applicant didn't ask for it. Uh you need to look at the rezoning application that's before you, and two, that would be a. Huge change from what the planning commission weighed upon. They were talking about the difference between R one and R two. And looking at that analysis, and now you're bringing in a commercial change. Uh that should just be denied. You can send it back to the PC afterwards and say reconsider this, but really you should let the applicant ask for commercial because they may not uh may not want it. So. One other point uh of emphasis in this, because you're, we've been talking about the rational basis test, and you know, you're passing legislation, and it gets looked at under that test, but. Courts are less forgiving on procedural errors, and that's, you know, the 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 one-two punch of. What are they looking at? Did you have authority to do it, and did you follow the procedures of your authority? Uh couple cases uh down here at the bottom. Someone did, uh what what the town there did, eleven days notice before the public hearing. That got challenged, ruled invalid. It says fifteen days, there's no grace to that. Do fifteen days. Um the change in the zoning category after planning commission action uh was invalid. Um so. Again, follow the procedures. That helps your attorney uh, again, defend defend your action. A couple of things that I see come up pretty often, I I want to address, because I feel like I talk about it a lot, especially with my. My planning commissions. Uh spot zoning comes up a lot, especially from the public. As anytime a property is being requested to be rezoned, uh you'll hear spot zoning. Well, what is spot zoning? And and the Tennessee Supreme Court. In the nineteen fifties addressed it for the first time, and it's kind of been the standard, and it's that quote there. It's the process of sing- singling out a small parcel. Of land for use classification totally different. From that of the surrounding area, uh for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of the other owners. Uh that is the very antithesis of planned zoning. So. Plan zoning is also uh invalid due to our constitution, uh which says you can't pass a public or private law. For the benefit of a single individual. Um. So in that that case, that grant case from nineteen fifty four. Uh that the zoning ordinance and map were amended to permit a an owner of a single city lot to apply her property. Um to commercial uses, whereas the property surrounding it was restricted to residential. That was challenged, and the court said there was no basis for this action other than it. It emanated from a strong desire to help this good lady. This this lady was asking for it to be rezoned commercial so she could sell it and presumably retire. Um that that's not enough. Uh you know, Sam earlier talked about sometimes you have to be the bad guy, and in this instance, they they should have been. It wasn't, it wasn't a good planning reason to um. To change a a small lot to commercial when it's surrounded by by residential in that instance. Now, I think the courts have relaxed that a little bit. They're not as uh. Strict with with spot zoning analysis. Um take this fielding case. Um. From uh twenty twelve, Court of Appeals, uh there was a rezoning of point eight acres, and that was upheld. Uh they found that a rational basis existed, and it was nearly identical to the grant case facts, but. This was a single residential lot that the owner asked to be rezoned to commercial. He also happened to be the only towing operator in the area. And the argument was that he can respond faster and help out uh emergency services. If he can have his business at his home. The the governing body agreed, they rezoned his property, neighbors sued, and the court said, no, there's a rational basis here. Public safety was a concern. We're going to uphold that. We're not going to insert our judgment for you. So again, and and we'll talk about this more in a minute. Give your attorney something to help defend it with. One of the worst things you can do is vote. With no discussion. Often that can still be uh upheld and and defended, but you give your attorney so much more ammunition if you say something. Like in that case, they said, we're concerned about public safety. We want our towing operator to be able to get into his tow truck and get to the scene of an accident faster. I vote to uh approve this this zoning amendment. Done. I I don't need any more than that. Just give give us something. Uh silence can can be a killer sometimes. Because then we, the attorneys, have to come up with the argument to the court saying, well, this could have been it, and we hope they buy it. If you say it on the record, uh it helps us. Um. So have some basis for your decision, and and again, always try to have an affirmative vote. I know that's not always going to be possible. Uh politics come into play, and sometimes a motion just fails, and you have to move on. Uh but if you can, like if someone makes a motion to approve a rezoning, it's accepted, and it doesn't pass. The best practice is to then have a motion to deny and have that pass, and maybe have a reason in there. Again, I know it's not always going to happen, but that is, in my opinion, a best practice. Um. So a couple other um. Things that come up that I wanted to point out, and the new law is actually going to maybe change my analysis on this first point a little bit, but. Current zoning is not a property right. Uh the vested property rights, which y'all have probably talked about before, and is way too deep for this discussion today. Um vest a developer in in property rights, and they can build what they have preliminary development plans for, whether it's a site plan. Whether it's a preliminary plat or even a building permit. Um. The down zoning and and value, that's going to have to be looked at, and I'm not, I'm not going to dive deep on that today, but current zoning is not a property right. Uh and you certainly don't have a right to get upzoned. You know, it it is discretionary. Limited by the rational basis test on on what happens to a rezoning. But um a couple other things that you can look to uh to help with your rational basis. Look to your general plan. If you don't have one, your zoning ordinance is typically your general plan, your comprehensive plan, your land use plan. Common sense. Um. Put something out there as to why you're voting uh the way you are. Again, it's not always going to be possible. It just makes it easier to defend a challenge. Um. Those, the 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 comprehensive plan, the land use plan, uh. If you have those documents, they're not law typically. Uh they can be. Uh but typically, they're not law, but they can be used as something to point to uh in in your um. Determinations about whether to rezone something or annex something. Uh a couple other press practice items, uh when I was thinking about this coming up with this presentation that I've seen in my practice. Uh don't attack the applicant in public or in writing. They will try to use that against you. Um I've I've had situations where even the applicant tried to rile up members of the planning commission. Uh and and I've been very pleased with my planning commissioners. They don't take the bait, but. When someone's desperate for a rezoning or or an annexation, they may. They may try to use anything they can, because a- again, you're seeing the growth in Tennessee, particularly Middle Tennessee. And there's a lot of money on the table, so you, there's a lot of pressure from developers to to get um the zoning classification. And and the uses that they're going for. Um. Evaluate all rezonings um based upon the maximum use. Do not rely upon what developers say. If there's a a lot that can. Based upon the zoning classification they're seeking, if there's a lot that can be subdivided into fifty uh lots. But the applicant say, I'm only going to do thirty. Don't evaluate it on that, and I don't even think you should look into any parts of that, but if you're going to. Know that it can be uh rezoned, uh sorry, it can be subdivided after the rezoning to fifty lots. Uh that developer might just be coming in to get it rezoned, and then they're going to sell it, and that new person's not going to be bound. At all, uh and even the original developer wouldn't be bound to what they said. Uh in a meeting, oh, we're only going to do X, Y, and Z. Well, that's great. Let me see your plans later. But we're going to look at this based upon the maximum use for the property. Um. And 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 anything less, I think, is a little bit of a disservice. Uh we already talked about the affirmative vote. That's more defensible, but again, it's not not fatal if you don't do it. Um a couple of my jurisdictions have established base zonings for when a property is annexed, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute. But basically, if a property comes in uh. Under annexation, uh it's going to be zoned, you know. R one or or some rural uh designation so that you don't mix up. Those two determinations, the annexation and then the zoning, the initial zoning of the property. Uh I think that's a really good best practice. Again, y'all have to decide for yourselves, but that way, we're not concerned about looking at. What the zone's going to be, because that's the next step after annexation is zoning the property. Uh we know it's coming in as. R one or or whatever, uh you're just looking at the annexation. Um the other thing a couple of my jurisdictions have done, and I've seen elsewhere, is. Impact studies uh for rezonings and annexations. Um. Traffic impact analysis uh is sort of a diet version of a full traffic impact study for annexations and rezonings can be useful, so you know the impact. That's coming to the property, and then also an economic um. Impact study, particularly for annexations, can be useful. The more information you have to make these decisions. Uh I think the better off you are, uh and you make the you make the applicant do that. Don't. Don't do that yourselves. Make them bring the information to you, and you evaluate it. You can certainly lay out. Either in your zoning ordinance or or or. Other policy, uh the criteria that you're looking for in both of those, but uh I certainly encourage you to think about um. Think about doing that. Um. Another thing that is probably the biggest point of my presentation today, uh and and could be the most controversial to an extent, but. In Tennessee, I I think planning commissions and governing bodies have been beat back so much by developers. Uh because of this threat that, hey, that's contractual zoning, and I think there was a question. Earlier during Sam's presentation about that. Uh. You can't contract zone. I think that personally is silly, but uh you can't contract zone unless you're in Chattanooga. Again, odd for various reasons. Uh you can't have an open negotiation in a meeting with an applicant. Okay, we'll rezone you to R two or C two. But would you agree to do X, Y, Z? That's technically not allowed. I'd be curious if that actually got challenged. There's not a a case directly on point, uh but conditional zoning is, and and I don't want any of you to be afraid of that. Ultimately, it's a little bit riskier. And and I don't want any of you to be afraid of that. Ultimately, it's a little bit riskier. It's more susceptible to challenge. Uh, but I think it's very defensible, but you have to make a decision for yourselves and talk to your attorney about their thoughts on this, cause they would ultimately have to to defend it. Uh, but uh, a Court of Appeals case in nineteen ninety five found that a conditional zoning uh request was um was proper. And what I mean by that is the uh city, uh Johnson City, uh where I was born, um imposed a buffer zone in an access round on a rezoning. They said, okay, we'll rezone you, but you've gotta do these two things before you're ever gonna get. I can't remember if it was a plat or a building permit, uh but you have to do those things. And they challenged saying, no, 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 that's contract zoning, can't do that. The court said, that's not contract zoning. There was no back and forth. There was no meeting of the minds. Uh, they put uh restrictions on you. Um, they put conditions on the zoning and they were unilateral. That's the key to it all. They're unilateral. On the flip side, I've seen this in in multiple jurisdictions uh as well. The applicant can put conditions on their their rezoning application. That that's perfectly fine. If you want to to limit the number of lots, if you want to promise that you're gonna widen the road, go for it. Make sure you put it in your zoning ordinance or resolution so that it goes of record, so that when we're all not here in thirty years and someone else looks at that, there they know that that condition is still in place, but don't be afraid of conditional zoning. I know it's gonna feel a little odd um based upon everything that you've been told over the years for the most part, but I've found uh case law in other states, treatises in other states that have basically found that it's a dereliction of duty to fail to put reasonable conditions on rezonings. Naked rezonings um are a disservice to the public. You're not promoting the 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 public. You're not promoting the general welfare and protecting them. I know that's gonna be a little controversial and some pushback will come from it, but don't be afraid of it. And again, the more pertinence you make your condition, the more likely it's gonna be challenged and and possibly successfully. Uh, they need to be reasonable. They need to be related to infrastructure and and protecting the public. Um. So think about that. Uh, I have a note on there. Uh. Puds are kind of in their own legal category and can probably have their own presentation, but they're effectively legal contract zoning, cause they're a mixture of zoning and plans and anyway. Uh, if you have that, you probably know a lot about it, but that can be for uh another day. Uh. Briefly on annexations, uh. The annexation process is the one by which municipalities grow. Counties don't do this. The county is the county. Uh, you know exactly where you are, but the cities within counties that aren't metro forms of government grow over time and uh I know this was mentioned in the legislative update that could change. The legislature is always trying to mess with the annexation laws and frankly, they're they're a bit of a mess at the moment, but the way they stand as we sit right now, um. Municipalities can't annex by ordinance. They used to. They they could just annex unilaterally uh property. People got mad, the law got changed. So now it's the resolution process. You have to pass two resolutions. You have to have a public hearing. It's basically more steps to a an ordinance, but um you have an annexation by resolution uh with a referendum that's typically when you're outside of what's called an urban growth boundary. Uh, that's typically the area designated for growth. Um, but that uh the referendum is the only way you can annex outside the urban growth boundary and you actually have a official vote by the election commission, either of the people who live on the property, so it could be just one person voting. I've had that happen a couple of times. Or the governing body can put it to the whole uh municipality. Uh, I've I've never had that happen. That would be a much more costly election, I imagine. Um, the other type that's more common is the owner consent where a property owner asks to be annexed. Um. So uh let's let's talk about that process a minute and then we'll get into a few more best practices. The process starts with a letter from the property owner, like I said. Um. It then goes, starts at the planning commission. Now, some uh jurisdictions like it to start at the governing body and they send it to the planning commission, but the real first step is at the planning commission. You have to develop a plan of services. Uh. There've been many cases uh about plan of services in the past. I encourage you to really look at them. Don't overpromise your plan of services. Make sure they're specifically tailored to what you know you can provide that property. Um. And then the other thing to consider when you're doing the planning commission plan of services process is are you gonna require them to do an economic impact study? Are you going to require them to do a traffic impact analysis? We talked about that a moment ago. You need those in your regulations, in my opinion, to ask them, but be thinking about that. Is the annexation of this piece of property going to be a net positive to the municipality? Because it is gonna be a drain on your resources. Uh, you you've got more area to cover with police and fire. You've you've got to provide these services. Um, but what what's gonna go there? How are we going to benefit as a town? How does this property benefit the public as a whole? After planning commission, they send up the plan of services. You move into the first resolution. It's kinda like the first reading of an ordinance. Um. Call in for two public hearings, one on the plan of services, one on the annexation itself. Please use map parcel, legal description if you want, address, but particularly a map delineating the area you're annexing. It's it's actually a requirement. Uh, you you need to use a map to show what property you're you're actually annexing. One of the best practice reasons for that is at the end of this whole process, we'll talk about it in a second. Your staff has to send a lot of notices to many forms of government letting them know that this property is now in our jurisdiction. So by the way, they can vote in our elections. They pay our taxes and if it's gonna have a commercial site on it, they're gonna pay our, they're gonna pay to us the sales tax. You don't wanna miss out on that. Um. So a map can really help make sure you're you're getting that information to all the governmental entities that need to know. You gotta post that first resolution if it passes on the property itself in three places and three places around town. You've gotta put the notices in the paper. Then you get to the second resolution and that adopts the plan of services and approves the annexation. So it's a multi-step process. There's a lot to it, but you are changing the municipal limit of uh of your of your town, of your city. You're growing it. Um, and you want those citizens uh who live there to actually be recognized as um full citizens. Um. Annexation is only the first step, so this is gonna tie it back to the rezoning process. Do not leave the property unzoned. It's why I I mentioned earlier, have a policy uh about what it's gonna be zoned to when you come in and then you ask for rezoning later. I've had multiple instances in which a property was annexed. Then there was a fight about what to make uh the zoning on the property and the governing body couldn't agree. Any motion kept failing and then the meeting had to end. So it's annexed. It's in the municipal limits, but now it's unzoned and you've created a legal problem. So uh uh again, I encourage you to have a a baseline of of what it comes in as and then you can ask for a rezoning. Uh, one other thing that's come up recently and in the past, and and it may not come up for you terribly often, but if you annex a piece of property and there are county roads around that property, you need to be talking to the county. There is no set path on how the ownership of that road works. At a minimum, you're gonna be dealing with two jurisdictions weighing in on road improvements, on connectivity to the road. Uh, you need to have a conversation with your county uh municipalities on what happens to county roads where the property is on one side of the road that you're annexing. Uh, we talked about traffic impact analysis. Um. And then the automatic, not automatic zoning. So in sum, from this whole thing today, I I hope you understand a little bit more about what the rational basis test is, that you you have to have some substantial relationship to public health, welfare uh in 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 rezonings, in annexations. Um, because that's how courts are gonna examine law changes, which those are. Implement policies and practices to increase information you are given. The more information on the front end, the better. You know, when Sam was talking about, hey, if they meet your requirements for plats, site plans, permits, variances, if they meet the requirements, you have to approve, right? That's only after you leave this world. There's a lot more discretion here that if you only have a rational basis, uh, your actions typically going to be defended. Uh, put conditions on it then. Sam was talking about it's improper to put certain conditions on approval of a preliminary plat if it's not in your subdivision regulations or your zoning ordinance. If you're just making it up, you're you could be subject to challenge. That should be happening now. That should be happening at annexation and rezoning. Cause once you get to to site plans, to plats, you're looking at minimum standards. And I've had so many uh jurisdictions I deal with and beyond get frustrated with minimum standards. You can obviously raise those minimum standards, but you can also address it at this level, in my opinion. So don't be afraid to exert your statutory powers. Uh, evaluate every developer as if they're about to sell the property and it's gonna be used maximally. I think any other analysis is 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 doing a disservice and you know, again, once you rezone, you're looking at minimum standards uh for for plats and site plans. So really more information now, make better decisions and uh help your attorneys defend uh defend your decision. So anyway, that's all I have. Uh. Andrew, are there a any questions we need to address?
Um, yes, we've got time for a couple before we go into our next session. Um. We received several, several folks are interested in receiving your slide deck. Would you be?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I'll be I'll be happy to share.
Okay. Um, I can get that from you and then send it out to everyone um who has registered for the meeting. So I appreciate you doing that.
Of course.
Okay. Uh, we do have a few questions in the chat. Um. Let's see. Does a municipal planning commission have to bring forth to the county regional planning commission, a resolution for annexation, a resolution for an annexation request? Or can the city just come in and annex a property that the landowner slash developer wants rezoned and annexed for a subdivision in townhomes? So what what does that coordination need to be with the county, I think, is what they're getting at?
Yeah, so a and and look, if there's multi-jurisdictional uh regional planning commissions that involve a county and a city, if, you know, uh, ignore those fringe cases. If it's just a municipal planning commission, they don't have to have the permission of the county planning commission of the regional, unless they're part of the regional. Then it's a whole different process that that would take too long, honestly, to answer here. But it's a, again, it's multi-step. You gotta go through all of the steps of annexing. Then you need to zone the property. Uh, and again, if you're like a couple of my jurisdictions, it's gonna come in as low use. Then they're gonna go through a rezoning to that higher use to then go through your subdivision regulations. And and you're talking about a pretty long process there, but you're not asking for permission from the county. Again, part of that urban growth map discussion earlier from me and 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 Will and Sam was that's where cities are supposed to grow. They can grow outside of it uh under certain circumstances, but they're supposed to grow in there. And the county played a role in determining where the urban growth boundary was. You're not asking for their permission. Um, certainly working with the county on that county road issue and and anything, having a good relationships positive, but you can act unilaterally on basically all of those things.
Uh, to follow up on that, if there's a state highway running through the property, who has to provide red lights, turn lanes and so forth? Is that up to the state or does that fall back on the city?
Uh, I think that's a good question. Yeah, yeah. Uh, and I know, Andrew, you probably dealt with this too. So state highways are under the exclusive jurisdiction of the state. Neither the county or the municipality is gonna play uh a major role in that. What what I have always advised planning commissions and usually this is at the the plat or site plan phase. I'll give you a common example. Hey, we want you to put to put in a turn lane. We're gonna make this can based upon your traffic study, all of that, we're gonna make this conditioned upon you adding a turn lane. Subject to T dot approval. You always have to have that caveat in there because T dot may say, no, we're not gonna allow you to put a turn lane in there. And that's gonna be true to any change to the state highway, in my opinion. If you want a red light, well, you're gonna have to apply for a traffic warrant. You make the developer do that. Uh, and T dot has to bless it. I've had many jurisdictions who want a a red light, who even offered to pay for it. And if T dot doesn't bless it, you can't just put a red light on a state highway. So yes, you want to put some of this on the developer. If it's, if there's a basis to it, if if it's in the traffic study, hey, you know, you're going from a C to a D. Turn lane would really help. Okay, you're gonna put in a turn lane. If T dot blesses it. So it it's, don't be afraid to put conditions or or anything related to the traffic study or the plat as to a state highway, but T dot's gonna have the ultimate say and you're at their mercy.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Um, lastly, one thing that comes up, uh, cities require mailed notice to adjacent property owners if a property is being rezoned. Uh, so the property owner or the applicant may need to send out mailers. I've seen across just middle Tennessee uh cities require mailed notice to property owners within two hundred feet, or maybe it's just the adjacent property owners. Franklin, we require it up to five hundred feet. Um, do you have any thoughts or suggestions on uh mailed notice? Cause that exceeds what the state requires.
It 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 does. Uh, and this has been coming up more and more. You know, we've seen more public engagement on uh plats and rezonings and and such and, you know, people are wanting more notice and and I completely understand it. And, you know, the law is always antiquated. The law still says, put the public notice in the newspaper, cause I'm totally reading the newspaper to see what's going on these days. Uh, especially in the back when uh when a planning commission is gonna meet on something. Uh, obviously, putting it on your website and stuff's a a better practice, but it's not a state requirement. So a lot of jurisdictions are requiring more notice. Here's my word of caution on that, and this has come up multiple times. Don't create a cause of action for someone who doesn't like your ultimate decision. And what I mean by that is, don't say you must mail out notice to everyone in a radius or or whatever and they have to get that notice. And if they don't, the the parenthetical there is, someone can challenge and say, well, I never actually got noticed. It's best efforts. We sent it out to all the addresses of record. We did our, we put some signs out. I have a couple jurisdictions who uh have changed, again, gone beyond state standards, uh minimum standards. And said, hey, you're gonna put signs out on properties that are being rezoned. If I drive by something, I wanna know it's getting rezoned. Uh, that's great. Keep doing that. Uh, but don't don't draft your laws in such a way as to create a a cause of action to challenge it. Um. Because it, look at the rational basis standard here. If if the court says, oh, you put in your laws, let's look at your laws. You put in your laws that you have to do X, Y, Z. Uh, you didn't do it. Well, procedurally uh procedural challenges are more likely to get uh uh a a win for a challenger against your law than than the substantive one. So don't don't create that. Do do the best practice and get it out there as best you can, but don't don't create um something for someone to sink their teeth into. I don't know if that answered your question, but I know that's the, there there's a growing movement toward providing more notice and that's absolutely fine, but don't, don't go beyond and talk to your 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 county or town attorney. They'll advise you on on how to thread that needle.
Okay. Let's do one more question. Chuck Downham asked if a municipality design designates a zoning classification on a parcel being annexed. Will this not be considered an amendment to the city zoning map that would require action by the planning commission and approval by the governing body? So it relates to. Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, yeah. I, no, I I yes, uh, the annexation process is its own series of actions. The um change to the zoning map is again, its own series of actions. Often they run parallel. Uh, I've had jurisdictions who literally do them at the same time. They're gonna pass that first resolution with the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. I don't love that. Uh, I kinda like the staggered approach of and and really like agenda item number three is that second resolution annexing, great. And once we know that passes, agenda item number four is the first reading rezoning or really zoning the property. You know it's annexed and now we're gonna start the zoning. Um. That uh again, that could lead to if it doesn't pass that vote on agenda item four where you're starting the zoning. Uh, you could have unzoned. So again, look at, you're gonna come in as X and then you can run it parallel. So it's the next vote. You've zoned it, but we know it's gonna be R one for everybody. Uh, but no, it's a separate process.
Okay. Well, thank you, Andrew. We really appreciate your time and expertise today and uh I'll be on the lookout for those slides and we'll get those out to everybody attending today.
I'll I'll send that out and and thank you. It's a an honor to talk to everyone today and hope everybody has a great uh Friday and a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final session for today is the Cumberland Region Tomorrow overview and we have with us Shelley Hazel and also Alan Thompson. Um, Alan Thompson serves on the board for Cumberland Region Tomorrow and has deep expertise and experience in land development consulting, which includes urban planning, zoning entitlements, landscape design, sustainable site design, zoning ordinance development, land planning. Alan is a forty-two-year resident of Nashville and he's always looking to promote. Alan is a forty-two-year resident of Nashville and he's always looking to promote a positive outcome in his communities. He graduated in nineteen ninety-two from the University of Georgia in landscape architecture. And Shelley Hazel works as a senior policy advisor at GNRC and serves as the managing director for Cumberland Region Tomorrow. Prior to joining the GNRC, Shelley spent ten years at the national nonprofit. Smart Growth America, which helps communities across the nation improve their livability, prosperity, sustainability. During her time at the SGA, she helped lead a technical assistance program that worked with governors and state administrators to help develop policy solutions to transportation, housing and urban planning challenges. At the GNRC, she works on a variety of issues, including solid waste planning, housing, sustainability and transportation. And she serves as a liaison uh growing GNRC's relationships with governments and organizations across the region. She's a native Kentuckian and a graduate of Vanderbilt. Um and in twenty eighteen, the Cumberland Region Tomorrow began a partnership with the GNRC to ensure that its regional programs help shape quality growth across middle Tennessee. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shelley and Alan and really appreciate y'all being here today.
Thanks, Andrew. And I think Alan is gonna lead the conversation.
Appreciate it, Andrew. When you read all that off, it made me realize how old I am. It's like good gravy, forty-two years. Um hey, we we appreciate this opportunity uh to get back in front of uh. All you guys and this is, this is a key group of people that we. Really uh value this time that we can uh present more info on Cumberland Region Tomorrow. Uh because you are decision makers, you are uh people that decide how your communities are formed, how they are shaped. And uh we very much appreciate that and respect that aspect of it. So so Andrew, um I'm going to share a screen.
All right, you should be able to do that.
All right. Which one am I sharing? All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, good deal. One second here. All right, so. Cumberland Region Tomorrow, I I I'm assuming most people uh are familiar with us and and know what we do. Um if if not, hopefully this will help explain that. Uh you may be more familiar with the Power of Ten Summit that we've held for many, many years. Um and just held uh our our most recent summit, and I believe that was last week. Uh seems like a month ago, but it was last week. Uh so anyway, uh Cumberland Region Tomorrow, uh we are a regional group. Uh that look at the middle Tennessee region as a whole. We've been around for, you know, over twenty years. Um and you know, our our goal is to bring the region together on key uh. Topics and issues that really need a regional discussion is not and an original solution. Uh and so uh if we can facilitate those those conversations, that's what we want to do. Uh we need each county, each city uh communicating with one another and figuring out how can we have the best solution? That's going to accommodate this particular issue in our region. So we've been doing that approximately uh twenty years plus. Uh these are the ten counties we represent. And I will show you the uh the board members here. This is our board members. And so the board members represent all different parts of our industry. Uh anywhere from uh school professors uh to bankers, to developers, to consultants. Uh to PR groups, uh you name it. We we have a. And and we had this intentionally, having that cross perspective to bring. Uh all different perspectives to uh the conversation when we're looking at a particular uh issue. Now, that being said, uh when you look at all the counties here. Uh the counties we don't cover are Dixon Montgomery and Cheatham in terms of representation on our board. Uh we're seeking to add that representation to our board because uh those counties uh obviously are seeing significant growth just like all the other seven counties that we have in our area here. Uh so that is something that we are seeking to to grow our board and make sure we have good representation from those counties. Um this is our advisory commission, so a lot of these people have served on the board previously. Uh but they also represent this large cross-section of uh key leaders in our communities, decision makers. Um consultants, planners, designers, uh et cetera. Uh and we want a good cross-section there uh so that we we have good input when we bring discussion to the table. So, you know, in that, in in the past few years, we've highlighted, you know, the key challenges in the region. Um we've been a resource for for planners and and we've been advocates for particular. Uh goals and initiatives uh that cities are seeking uh or the region is seeking. Uh and then uh, as I've said before, a facilitator for regional conversation. And I think that's that's the big biggest aspect of what we do. When you look at all ten counties. Um you know, whether it's a city, whether it's a county in particular area, when when you make a particular decision, it can have a ripple effect over the other nine uh counties, depending on what that looks like and what what that decision was made. Um so the fact that we can bring everybody to the table and say, hey, let's talk about this. You know, how does Williamson County impact Murray County and Murray County Dixon and Dixon Wilson and so forth and so on? And how can we best tackle a particular issue together as a whole for the benefit of the greater region? So uh as as we were uh moving right along through the years, what we didn't plan for was a global pandemic. So the global pandemic hits us and uh turns everything upside down, quite frankly. Uh so we had this whole new paradigm. Uh it not only turned upside down our society and where we live and at when we work and where we work and. You know, how we get groceries or how groceries come to us, you know, all those things have kind of changed. Um uh over the course of really three years. And so with that, we had, one, we had the struggle that every nonprofit had was, okay, all of a sudden we have to go. Uh away from in-person meetings and and go to a virtual format of which we did. Um and that had its own challenges uh in itself. Uh we did just have our second in-person uh Power of Ten Summit this past week. Uh very successful. Uh we look forward to it growing uh next year as well. And we'll get into some more detail uh in that a little later in this presentation here. Um but what we saw from the pandemic. And, you know, quite frankly, we didn't know what we were going to get uh from from our perspective, which is a consultant side. We had no idea how is this going to impact our market, what was going to change. Uh where we kind of expected everything to slow down. Uh actually, everything multiplied in terms of a growth perspective, infrastructure needs perspective. Um and then that just the industry as a whole. So when all of a sudden we saw the larger uh markets, the New York, Chicago's and LA's deciding. Hey, I'm going to move to Nashville. Uh that that really changed the dynamic on on who we are as a community. We already had a rapid, fast growth. Um this only expedited it that much more. And it also forced a particular issue, which was, hey, you can work from home. And once that was uh implemented, people decided I can work from home. So it really changed the dynamics of our patterns of how we live, where we work, where we recreate and so forth. And when we do it. So that really changed our patterns. However, uh it it did not change the fact that our region is growing faster than ever. And uh we're seeing even more challenges come with that. Workforce challenges, um having enough people uh to work. Uh in an effective community from service positions uh to uh even professional positions. You're seeing those challenges across uh our industry, uh whether it's uh from fire, police. Uh in in service or teachers or um whether it's new engineers. Whether it's the people that that help staff and work our hotels and our restaurants. Uh we're seeing a work, a major workforce challenge here. And so it's like, well, we just grow and add them to our workforce, right? Well, easier said than done, that rapid growth has put way more demand ahead of what we have available. And that has uh increased significant uh cost of living, especially cost uh and prices of a home. Um so when we look at that, we look at at key. Key uh items in our in our region. You know, ensuring transportation and housing options. That's probably our two biggest ones. Uh when, you know, when we touch on the summit, our summit was the theme on it was affordable housing. And and I'll go into a little more detail when we get to that uh component of it. But that plays a big, big role uh because you really need uh. From one end of the demographics to the other to have a healthy society in which everybody plays a particular role. Uh to serve their community. Uh and that's where you get your your healthiest interaction. Um with the growth, transportation issues, transportation issues have changed. Yeah, not everybody goes to work. However, we're still seeing a lot of growth in uh traffic. I think we were rated the number one uh most difficult city to commute. Uh we've gotten a lot of number one rankings. That's not one you want. Uh and so we're definitely have transportation issues today. Uh as we grow and we're going to see significant growth over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. We're going to be really looking at transportation issues uh if they're not addressed sooner rather than later. And those transportation issues play into a key component for the solution for affordable housing. Uh and so that's probably the biggest challenges we see right now as a region. Uh and it's not any one city or any one county uh that has to come up with the solution. It's really the ten working together uh to figure out the best way to address this for the benefit of the the greater region. Um further, you know, we got to do it in a way that we're protecting our natural resources and our working lands. And we had some forums on that and I may get uh Shelley to speak to our forums here in a second. Um but at the end of the day, you know, Nashville's growing, middle Tennessee's growing. That's actually a really positive thing. Uh but uncontrollably is not going to have a good end result. Uh so how we grow, where we grow, uh will have a big impact on the type of community in the future we create. Uh for the residents here. So if we're going to be creating the these great places for people to live and work. Uh play, raise their families. Um we really have to understand what does it mean in terms of decisions making? That's made over large-scale land use policy plans that cities or counties are going through. Uh to the day-to-day planning commission decision that's made based uh on particular zoning efforts that's put in front of you. Um. So with that, uh we've continued the power of ten. I'm going to touch on that in a second. Uh but we did learn and became very effective at digital forums over the course of COVID. And we've held three different forums this year. Shelley, you want to touch on those?
Sure. So in twenty twenty, we started doing forums online that people from anywhere could participate in. In this past year, we did three that looked at the efforts underway on I twenty-four. What can we learn from the um the test bed and all that Vanderbilt, T dot, Gresham Smith are working on? We looked at uh connecting rural communities, looked at broadband access. What does that mean for communities? Um and then also the future of agriculture. What can we be doing to help farmers protect their land, keep it in agriculture, et cetera? Moving forward, you know, we want to continue to do some uh online forums, but also integrate some in-person ones as well. The, you know, I think this is a little different from our Power of Ten Summit that Alan will talk about, that we're able to get in a little. More granular conversation about uh some issues. Um and we've had a really good turnout. We've had a lot of people, you know, uh staff from planning departments, elected officials. Um and all participate. So they've been really good. We've got positive feedback on those. But we're always like looking for topics and all to cover too. So we'd love input on what you all think are the most important things that we should be talking about in the region.
Right. And to to Kelly's point, when when we're looking at these particular forums, uh they're. Uh their infrastructure and natural resource-based. Uh the I twenty-four test bed is, was really focusing on uh the the digital approach to I twenty-four to hopefully uh manage uh traffic in a better situation through through digital information boards. Um that's a very high-level way of explaining it. Um connecting to rural communities, you know, with people having the ability to work from home, getting fiber optic. Uh out into that rural community so that you can effectively uh work from your place of residence. And I know the state of Tennessee and Governor Lee put a a huge emphasis on that uh to making sure that we're getting that fiber optic out to every aspect and every uh area within the state of Tennessee. And then the future of agriculture, um you know, we. We we definitely want to grow, but we want to grow smart and we don't want to eliminate uh immediate regional food sources. Um because that's our, that's our best source uh for for future needs. So those those, we like breaking it down, having a little more connecting conversation uh with those people that would like to chime in online. Uh we're going to have online uh forums coming in twenty twenty-four, but we're also looking at in-person forums uh beyond that of just the power of ten. Um so the Power of Ten was held uh on November ninth last week. And its discussion was specifically on affordable housing. And that is going to have a a huge impact on our region as a whole. Uh I know dealing with a lot of single-family uh developers, you know, they got, you know, kind of the saying, drive until you qualify. You know, so your affordable housing has to move farther and farther out of the region and from uh the actual urban core. And so we're we're pushing people farther out to be able to afford housing and then they have to pay more uh in. You know, price of gas and they have to spend more time in their car commuting to their jobs. And so you have a quality of life both from an affordable standpoint, uh a cost of living standpoint. And uh just a social standpoint. So the affordable housing is a real, real issue. Uh we had great conversation. Uh uh Mayor Freddie O'Connell here in Nashville, you know, he has put a. Uh a huge emphasis on trying to come up with our best options, uh what we can do. Uh but again, this is bigger than a Nashville thing. Uh this is a middle Tennessee regional uh conversation and solution that needs to be gained. We had a uh this State of Housing uh by Ralph Perry, uh the Tennessee Housing Department Association. Um authority, sorry. And uh then we had Ralph Schultz with Nashville Area Chamber. Uh we had a keynote speaker, which was Shane. We had a keynote speaker, which was Shane Phillips, and he is the author of The Affordable City. And so we had great discussion on how do you achieve this sense of affordability? How do you find these areas where you can have your key service people? Integrated into your community, not pushed to the outskirts of your community. Then we had a panel, you'll see down in this lower left-hand corner here. We had a panel discussion and with that, we had Marshall Crawford of the Housing Fund. Dell Mitchell here with Pinnacle Finance Partners. Because a big component of this is not a developer's solution. It's not a political solution. It's not a bank solution. It's all in one. And they all have to work together and it has to work financially. If it doesn't work financially, then it's not going to be a long-term sustainable solution. So we had Dell Mitchell with Pinnacle Financial. We had Nick Ogden right here. He's with Clear Blue Company and. And they are dedicated to constructing and developing affordable housing as well as Nancy Van Reese. She is a previous council lady within in Nashville and she's with LDG Development. And they are also dedicated to building and constructing and developing affordable housing. And then we had Mayor Joe Pitt of the city of Clarksville. And so the city of Clarksville is seeing significant growth uptick as well. And so we had great conversation from developers to the financial end, to the political side of it. And what are some options that we could look at? So from a summit standpoint, extremely successful. And that's that's again, that's what we're here for. Let's bring everybody to the table. Let's have these conversations. So we had just over 300 at this year's summit. And we're looking forward to that growing next year. And getting back to our pre-COVID numbers back in the day. And again, the regional conversation, the regional solution is what we're seeking to help facilitate. These are just some of our partners and our sponsors. But that's kind of a. A cross-section of Cumberland Region tomorrow. We 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 did not fade away. We're stronger than ever. And the regional conversation is going to be needed now more than it ever has been. So Shelley, do you have anything to add to that? And then we're we're happy to open up for any questions.
I don't that, yeah, I don't have anything to add. I think I just, I would love to hear, you know, the group, what they think. Resources and all that we could be providing issues that are of importance to you guys that we could be helpful in facilitating that conversation around. Surely someone has an idea.
Somebody has the answer for affordable housing. We just need one answer. I guess let me ask this question. What are you seeing in your communities from an affordable standpoint? What's the impact? What's that look like? And then what do you see as your biggest challenge in 2024 and really through 2030?
We have interest rates. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, that's fine. This is Leslie Meehan, and I asked a question earlier about. Faith-based institutions and their ability to create housing. And the reason I asked that question is yesterday, Think Tennessee and the Urban Institute released a report on housing for Middle Tennessee. And the analysis looked at property owned by faith-based institutions, by nonprofit organizations. And by healthcare systems. And essentially looked at how many units could be built under current zoning. And different upzoning scenarios with different types of unit allowances based on proximity to transit and other kinds of things. So completely a scenario planning type of analysis. And then there was also an analysis looking at subdivisions. And so it was really interesting to see how many more affordable housing units. Could be added under land that as planners, we might not traditionally think of as developable land. So that's now kind of intriguing to me and Hawkins Partners showcased a tool that they had created. That is very much in the beta version, but the idea is to help communities have. Essentially a matrix or kind of a drop-down Excel spreadsheet that would allow them to enter in their current zoning. And some future zoning scenarios to see if going through the process of. Essentially allowing housing on on one of these types of lands would be, would the juice be worth the squeeze? So I think that's really interesting and could be a solution across Tennessee that we may not have. Done a deep dive into up to up to now.
Yeah, that was a really interesting conversation and I think. Think they said that Davidson County would be doing an assessment of the city's land that would be available for. Development as well for affordable housing. And I thought one of the interesting things too, I think Marshall Crawford pointed out, like. The religious organizations aren't developers, like they just don't think that way. They don't know how to how to make those connections. So maybe there's a role there for organizations, cities and all kind of help connect.
What what you do see is a lot of the religious organizations are on major corridors near existing infrastructure. But I think the bigger, the bigger aspect of it, Leslie, is. The political support. To move forward in that direction. So if you're asking, is hypothetical, if you're asking a church, which is a relatively insignificant low use with low traffic that you only see in off-peak hours. To suddenly change to a multifamily development with 24/7. Interaction, then, you know, are you going to have the political support to do that? And so I think that that's ultimately, that's what it's going to come down to, you know, or, you know. Are we going to be making decisions? Because I I think what you're speaking to and what the article spoke to. Part of the solution to affordable housing is density. And everybody see that is especially in the suburban areas, you know, that's seen as a very. Unpopular word, so to speak. But in reality, we need to see density along our existing corridors where our existing infrastructure. Lives where you got sewer and water and roadway network that will help support that density. And we need to make it easier, not harder. And so, you know, whether that is a movement from. A particular city, whether it's Nashville, whether it's Franklin, Murfreesboro, Lebanon, you name it. If that's a movement that they put together a a proposed. Aspect of their zoning ordinance that would support that. That might be the answer, but you you're going to have to put it in a way that. It's not every person coming to planning commission arguing their case for density. And then it's put on the vote of those planning commissioners. And then transferred to a vote to council members or to aldermen. It really needs to be something integrated into our growth plans and buy right options into our zoning ordinance. So that that decision is not a question of how many people show up in red shirts against. Density being next door to them. So I I think that's that's going to be our biggest challenge and that's going to be in every county and every city. And it, you know, at some point we have to understand. What does that look like from a growth plan and are we committed to support it from a political standpoint? Any other questions? I I can stir up all kinds of good things. Andrew, you know that.
Maybe the last question to tackle is. Bradley Hickman asked about corporations buying up houses and quantities that can greatly influence rent rates. So has Cumberland Region Tomorrow had any discussions about. Corporate entities purchasing up homes?
Though, so is that, and and I've I've seen it and heard it through Nashville Greater Realtors. Where you'll have, you know, a group out of New York or some other large market that basically will come in and buy houses for cash sight unseen. And.
Did that.
So there you go. And and so when they, you know, they can do that knowing, you know, they can rent them. Later and the need is here, the demand is here. So that makes the market very difficult. And I I know another movement is for rent neighborhoods. You know, is that, is that an affordable option that needs to be considered? I know they're not popular. But in terms of have we tackled that specific topic from an organization standpoint? We haven't. There's certainly been discussion around it. But we have not tackled that that particular topic. It makes the the market difficult. Especially when you're looking to buy a home. Any anything to add to that, Shelley?
No, I think that's right. I think it'd be, I haven't seen data. I think it'd be really interesting to see what the what the data is on that.
Well, I I I think something to keep in mind, I mean, my my kids are. I have one in college too that that's graduated, you know, and they, for them to come back and live here. And afford it is. Virtually impossible. I mean, you have to move way out to afford anything. Have some some quick data points here. You know, the the median income in Nashville is like $71,000. The median home price is $433,000. In 2019, the median home price in Nashville, and this is just 2019. Was $290,000. So it's gone up almost $150,000 in the Nashville market. The median rent in 2019 was about 1,600, 1,700. Today, it's it's more like 1,800. So you don't see as much of an increase there in the median rent. But you still see an increase and those are softening because we have more inventory coming on than we have demand. But that inventory will be gone quickly. Williamson County, which is probably going to be our our most affluent of the counties. Its median home price in 2019 was 534,000 and today it's 835,000. So you're looking at a $300,000 increase from 2019 to today in Williamson County. So if you look at that, you know, I'm assuming Williamson County needs teachers and firemen and police, just like everyone else. And they have them. But they live in Hendersonville and Murfreesboro and in farther areas and and commute into those particular jobs. And then Dixon County, which is probably one of our more affordable counties. You know, it was $219,000. Oh, that was very achievable back in 2019. But now it's $345,000 and that's in Dixon. Dixon's not a short drive either. You know, it's it's a good bit down the road. Our fastest growing county, which is Rutherford County. You know, it's it's got a median home price of right at $410,000. But here's here's the biggest thing that's kind of stood out to me in January of 2022. A mortgage payment, average mortgage payment on a house at a 3.45 interest rate was. $1,351, almost $1,400. Today, same average mortgage rate on a 30-year loan on a 7.15 interest rate. Is $2,347. So you have a $1,000 increase in a mortgage payment. So where we've had demand that really push up housing prices. Now the the ability to get a loan and actually afford that has become significantly more difficult with the the raising of the rates. So it's only amplified the issue that we we have in our area. That said, you know, I think there needs to to be discussions in in each county, each city to kind of understand what that means. And what what kind of solution can be done to accommodate. An affordable or attainable or even workforce type housing. Because keeping our keeping our. Service men and women integrated in the community makes for a healthier community. And it minimizes unnecessary infrastructure improvements in in other areas as well. So that's a little deeper conversation on the affordable aspect. We will have forums coming up, which we would love to have anybody jump in and join us on those. And our Power 10 Summit is probably going to hit somewhere in September, we're thinking. We haven't landed that date yet. Its main focus will be transportation. So that's kind of where we are today. And we would love to have any other questions somebody might have after this, feel free to send them to Shelley. And we will do the best we can far as. Reaching out to you and answer those questions. And if you would like. Representatives from Cumberland Region. Tomorrow to come out to your community and present at your community, we would be, we would entertain that as well. So. Other than that, that's that's all I have. Shelley, any any kind of closing thoughts and?
No, I just shared our website with everyone in the chat. So it's Y-O-U-R-C-R-T.com. So please visit, reach out.
All right.
Great. Well, thank you, Alan. Thank you, Shelley, and we appreciate all the participants on the call. I hope this was engaging and knowledgeable for you all and be on the lookout for a follow-up email from me with. The legislative report and some other information. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Enjoyed it. All right. Bye.